Mayor Stewart.
Here.
Councilmember Kovar.
Here.
Councilmember Dibala.
Here.
Councilmember Kostic.
Here.
Councilmember Siemens.
Present.
Councilmember Smith.
Here.
Councilmember CRC.
All right, there are no changes to our agenda this evening. Looking forward, next week on March 27th, we will not have a council meeting. It is right before our, we begin our budget meetings, which will start with the City Manager's Proposed FY 2020 Budget Presentation on April 3rd. And then we'll have a work session that night on discussion of the reorganization of the Safe Roadways Committee. And then the following week, we begin on Monday, April 8th, with a budget open house and then a budget work session. And then Wednesday, April 10th, will be a public hearing on the budget. And then another open house on Monday, April 15th, and this one will be at the New Hampshire Avenue Rec Center, as will our budget work session that evening. And then there'll be more details on our upcoming agenda items on the city website. All right. Cool. Tonight, we have a number of proclamations. I'm going to ask, is Erica Meyer here? Ah, here's Erica. We want to welcome Erica, who brought to us the Meat Out Day. Today, we're proclaiming March 20th, 2019, as Meat Out Day. I'll just read this one, since Erica is here. Whereas environmentally, environmental sustainability is a priority for the city of Tacoma Park. And whereas a whole food, plant-based diet reduces our risks of various ailments, including heart disease, high blood pressure, stroke, various cancers, and diabetes. And whereas a plant-based diet helps protect the environment by reducing our carbon footprint, preserving forest, grasslands, and wildlife habitat, and reduces pollution of waterways. Whereas the United Nations Food and Agricultural Organization estimates that the meat industry generates nearly one-fifth of the man-made greenhouse gas emissions that are accelerating climate change worldwide. And whereas an estimated 1,800 to 2,500 gallons of water go into producing a single pound of beef. And whereas studies have shown that plant-based foods use fewer resources and cause less pollution. And whereas a growing number of people are reducing their meat consumption to protect their health and the environment, as well as to prevent animal cruelty. And whereas Sense Meat Out was launched in 1985, more than 35 million Americans have explored a plant-based diet and reduced their consumption of meat, dairy, and eggs. And major food manufacturers and national franchises are marketing more meat-free options in response to this growing demand. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the city of Tacoma Park, Maryland, do hereby pronounce March 20th, 2019, as Meat Out Day, and encourage all residents to reduce their meat consumption and to add more plant-based foods into their diets as a way to help protect the environment, their health, and animals, and to explore the variety of vegetarian cuisine offered in our community. So, thank you very much, Erica, for coming this night, and we have that proclamation. And I feel like I should have let Councilmember Siemens write that, since he is actually living that. In addition to Meat Out Day, we also have a proclamation of Love Your Local, which will be on March 30th. I'm not going to read all of this one, but you will come enjoy Love Your Local Day. This is recognizing independent businesses that make our community a special place to live and visit. We will be spending the day on March 30th, visiting local businesses around the community. More information is on the city website, as well as the Main Street Tacoma website. And you can love your local by shopping and dining, or exercising, dancing, getting a haircut in Tacoma Park on March 30th, and spend a minimum of $10 in a local business that day to love your local. So, we will be around the city at different businesses, and I hope to see everyone that day. Finally, yes?
I think they're going to switch out.
Okay. All right, we're going to do this.
Could you start over, please?
Yeah. All right. The last proclamation we have is Arbor Day in Tacoma Park, and Arbor Day is on, oh, this passed. It was on February 6th, so this is a cleanup one. All right. So that was our three proclamations.
That might be April 6th.
April 6th, okay. It is April 6th, it's a typo here. So it's on April 6th. We'll celebrate on Saturday, April 6th, outside the Tacoma Park Library, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Activities will include educational activities and distribution of free tree seedlings. So please come to Arbor Day on April 6th. Great, all right. So those are all our proclamations this evening. We have two presentations tonight. One is an update on the library renovation, and then a presentation from NDC regarding the meeting that was held yesterday on the Development Review Committee. So first, regarding the library, I am very happy to see Mr. Lookmeyer back with us. It's been too long. Push the button on, and...
All right, thank you very much. I'm happy to be back. We thought we would give you a fairly brief update as to where we are. I'm not sure that all the council members have been present at some of the previous presentations, so very quickly, I just wanted to review a couple of things. You all are well aware of where the library is, and the fact that it's about a 65-year-old library, served the community well, but it obviously is in need of some attention. It encompasses not only the library proper building, but obviously the area around, I'll call it the octagon, where there are several computer labs that are run by the library, but are certainly not within the library, so that has presented some operational issues. You know, the exterior of the library was designed to be a pretty typical library back in the 50s, when there were very high windows and stacks went around the perimeter walls. That was kind of the state-of-the-art, so that it's a fairly inward-oriented building. People can't really see in, or can they see out? There are, there is a flood wall that was constructed, and that's part of the topic of the conversation this evening, which is that concrete low wall that goes from, on your screen in the upper-left photograph, from zero up to about two feet tall. And of course, the mosaic wall, which has always been something that we have discussed in the past, making sure we can keep, and the fact that the library has always been, the expansion of the library has always been constrained by some of the major landscaping between Philadelphia Avenue. For those of you who have not spent any time in the library, it does suffer from a number of code deficiencies, including ADA clearances, lack of the proper number of restrooms, they're not accessible, they're very small, it does not have a sprinkler system, it's got an outdated HVAC system, and it basically is not a contemporary environment. I don't think that comes as any surprise to any of you. And over the last number of months, we've investigated and explored a number of different options on how to expand the library from the image that you have on your screen, and there was another floor plan option, where we've enclosed the courtyard that currently is between the community center and the library, and have sort of extended the library as far as possible out to the landscaping. And a number of ways of exploring the operation of the inside. And we've all talked about, obviously, making this a very flexible library that can respond to today's environment, and certainly the electronic media that we all have. We produced a number of interior images, so that you could get a sense of the way the library might look, from the entrance from the community center, to seeing what you might see from the circulation desk, and the character of the adult and children's areas, and a number of exterior images. And that's kind of where we stopped about a year ago. And so that sort of brings you up to date, for those who were not present. As we began to then develop, one of the options came to light, and we've always known there was a flood wall, but there was not a whole lot of information about why it was there and how high it needed to be. We discovered a report that was prepared that addressed mitigation of flooding, but not necessarily anything else about it. And the mitigation had to do with both procedural issues in the city, technical issues, and they identified actually a number of structures that could in fact be subject to some flooding, one of which was this building. And of course, there are a number of residences as well. Basically, the water goes down Sligo Creek, and, which was an important part of why Tacoma Park is here. So we began to investigate that flood wall, and as part of that, I think you're aware that a flood study was required by Montgomery County, to determine what the flood level is and what to do about it. And before the county would in fact even give us any advice, they had no real data on the information, but they don't really review a study until you submit a site plan. So there's a little bit of a chicken and an egg issue here. And so the flood study was commissioned, it was completed, and it was submitted to Montgomery County, who said, "We agree with all of your procedures, now go ahead and submit a site plan." So, we met with the staff a number of times to determine how best to proceed. So the next step, and this is a drawing of the flood study, and what you see in these blue lines are the extent of the flood study as it relates to the community center and the library. Interestingly enough, right about where the library is, just south of the library, and I'll put the cursor, if I can, in this area, constrains the flood, right through this area. And then it opens up, simply because of the width and the topography of the land. And the folks who did the floodplain study cut a series of sections all the way up Philadelphia Avenue and all the way down, as part of their study, so that they could see what the topography was doing. The lines, these dark lines that you see, establish the flood level height. So where my cursor is, up to the left side, there's elevation 210.03. You see down here, 209. You see over here, 205. And I'm going to go to the next slide. And interestingly enough, we go from 210 to 29, right through where the library is, and then all the way down, four feet lower, to 205. So what that is telling us is that as the topography slopes downward, the flood level goes down with it. It simply follows the topography. And because of that constraint, right about where the library is, it's not flowing down very quickly, but it flows down very quickly as soon as it gets by the library. So the current top, and the library finished floor elevation, that's what FF means in your slide here, the finished floor elevation is elevation 209.59, and the elevation of the community center is eight inches higher, at 210.37. So you can see that...
Excuse me, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Is that finished floor level, is that taken into consideration, the basement level on this building?
No, that is the finished floor of the entry level.
Thank you.
And the top of the current flood wall is elevation 210.15, which is just below the height of the community center, but is obviously higher than the library. The code tells us that a habitable floor should be one foot above a 100-year flood level. So, there was a number of options, as we began to say, what can we do about enhancing the library? We could raise the level of the library floor. We could, our engineers said, we could actually dig out your parking lot and push back the retaining wall into the hillside up to the school, to widen that constriction I talked about, to let the floodwaters go faster, so that they would not back up and be as high as they are in the current situation. Or the third thing is, we could demolish the library and simply rebuild it with a higher flood level, so that we don't have to worry about anything. So we said, all right, what are those implications? What does that mean? Well, if in fact, we decide, if you decided, excuse me, to raise the floor level of the library, which is possible, the floor level, the library right now has a clear height of approximately nine feet inside, from the floor to the hung ceiling. So raising that would lower that height to eight feet, which is about the standard height of your house floor level, unless you have a Victorian house, which then probably is much higher. Above the ceiling in the current library is only about 10 inches, and then there's a wood structure. So this library is built with steel columns and a wood roof. Generally, above a ceiling in most commercial buildings, there is anywhere from three to four feet of space to allow ductwork, and allow lighting, and allow sprinkler lines to go through. So we have a situation here, where if we actually raise the floor level and lowered the ceiling, the lowest we could make the ceiling is at seven foot six, which is by code, the minimum of a habitable space. Currently, your stacks in the library go up to seven feet. Also, a code tells us that when you sprinkle a building, the highest stack level has to be 18 inches below the sprinklers. So we're sort of burning the candle at both ends, by raising the floor and lowering the ceiling to allow ductwork, and pretty soon you have a building that's virtually unusable. So we said, all right, what else could one do? Well, the second option was to widen this area in the parking lot and build a huge retaining wall to push back the hill up to the school. And while that is possible, it would then require another whole flood analysis, the same kind of analysis that just went on, to see whether that actually would work. So, from an engineering standpoint, the civil engineer said, "It's a possibility, that could work, but it'll cost another amount of money to repeat the flood control." And we hired an independent estimator to determine how much that would cost in construction, and I'll get into that in a second. So that's a pretty major, that was a major undertaking. The third is to demolish the library and rebuild a new library with the appropriate floor level. That would enable the library to be above the floodplain, and, but it would actually raise the library about 10 inches above the height of the community center, so that there would have to be a small ramp that connected the two. Much like today, there's a small ramp that goes downhill, that gets, goes to the library. So there's some issues here. Obviously, if one was to widen the parking lot, you would have no parking here for a period of time. By simply removing the library and rebuilding it, obviously, that doesn't have an implication. So we did a very, prepared a very quick cost estimate, to looking at the three options, raising the floor, modifying the parking lot, demolishing and constructing a new building. And we went through the three, the number of things that would have to happen. Rebuilding the parking lot, which is the first column. And in all three cases, there would be some work in the parking lot, but not substantial. Basic site development, which includes any landscaping, sidewalks, or any kind of public space. Renovation of the existing library, adding to it, or building new. And then there's a small renovation that is being proposed, that I will show you in a second, of the Recreation Department, to kind of clean up the floor plan. So, the most expensive thing that we could do would be to modify the existing parking lot and build that retaining wall, which is probably also the most disruptive. The next most expensive is to demolish and construct a new library. The least expensive thing is to raise the floor and to renovate, but at best, you would end up with a little seven-foot-high library, which I think, when you saw, after spending all this money, what you would get out of it, you'd be disappointed. You'd say, "My gosh, you spent all this money, and this is all we've gotten." So, the other small piece that I wanted to show you, I'm sorry, and, well, I'll go back here. So, if in fact, you designed a new library, I'm not going to read all of these, but it would provide the, this list of issues, from basically creating a state-of-the-art library, making sure that you meet all codes, you have appropriate restrooms, you can maintain the mosaic, and it would basically enable you to have another library that would last you another 65 years. And we looked at, we spent some time with the library staff, addressing different design options, so I'm going to show you three very quickly. This is the same shape, for all intensive purposes, of the expansion that we illustrated to you last year. So, we've expanded the library, but there's some additional things that could happen. We were constrained initially by the existing mechanical area, the restroom area, the plumbing, the relationships of the existing building to the community center. So this initial option simply said, "All right, we can repeat it, but we can rearrange the library a little bit better." One of the things that has always been discussed is the relationship between the community center and the library, and this corridor that connects the community center and the library, and the fact that the computers are run by the library, the computer room, but they're not in the library. So this is sort of a starting point. The second said, you know, let's move the staff, let's move all those computer rooms, let's get the staff in a location that is against the parking lot. Let's enter the library and get the program room, brand-new toilets, right at the front door, so that it could be used after hours. Let's shorten the distance between the community center and the library, and have a much more flexible library. And by the way, the farther we can move the entrance to the library, up toward the community center, the lower the floodplain is, and the less we need to raise it. And so there was an exploration here, saying, as we move the library entrance, I'll call it up on this plan, toward the community center, we get some benefit on not having to raise the library. And what benefit is there to both the library and to the community center? So this was the second option. The library staff appeared to like this better than the first ones. We came up, as far as we possibly could, separating the little pit out there where your mechanical unit is, right here, and simply separated it with some restrooms, moved the computer rooms and the staff to this side of the library, and pretty soon, we get just past the game room, and we're into the library. And so it becomes a little bit more a part of a community center, which, incidentally, many new libraries are talking about their libraries becoming community centers, and not just libraries. So the more we can integrate this lifelong learning and ability to combine all these functions, the better off people think you are. So, as we talked to the library, they liked this option two and three, they liked little pieces, but we said, all right, at least we've explored to see whether there are potentials, and whether there's an improvement that can be made. So we know that we could design a better library, one that potentially has some advantages if it's replaced. You're obviously out of the floodplain, and there's some architectural options. This is a very quick diagram of showing, on the left, the existing Parks Department. Sorry, this didn't get relabeled. Mine did, but I sent this earlier, so I apologize. And what we're trying to do is to take these two restrooms, which are really insufficient in size, and get them to be opened from the main corridor, across the other two restrooms, and recapture this corridor, and give it back to the Parks Department, Recreation Department, I'm sorry, and get a better layout. And so this is something that has come up as a peripheral discussion, as we talked about renovating the library, so...
If I, if I can just make a note, one of the things that's particularly attractive about this is that the window for customer service would be on the main hallway, which really is where, right now, it's so uncomfortable where it is. The, and the other thing that Mr. Lookmeyer referenced, I think is really important, is the opportunity to get away from where the pipes are now for the bathrooms, so that bathrooms can be appropriately sized, can be arranged in a way that we're interested in seeing them arranged. And it, you know, I think, and then it allows also for your basic open office kind of style for the Recreation Department.
So, here's some conclusions, or food for thought, if you will. I feel like my role is simply to give you what some of the options might be, and certainly your decision as to what you would like to do. But we've come to the point, I think, in the investigation, and in the study that's we've undertaken over the last couple of years, that I think we've pulled the string, the sweater is unraveled, and we've sort of come to a conclusion at this point.
I want to note that I feel very comfortable about moving away from a wooden ceiling in a public building. I, you know, that's, that is something that I hadn't quite fully appreciated when we first got into this. And the opportunity to have a more standard size between the ceiling and the roof allows for, actually, less expensive HVAC and lighting and other equipment, so, because it doesn't have to fit, squish into a small space. So those are things that actually do give some financial compensation as you go through that.
Great, thank you. Mr. Lookmeyer, do you have, basically, what the timing might be for the three different options, like, or how long it will take for the project?
Any of the designs would probably take anywhere from eight to 10 months, and I would assume the construction is typically 15 months plus or minus.
And as my understanding, one of the things that we had talked about before, regarding the constraints on the bathrooms, is that we were constrained... on the bathrooms is that we were constrained in making them gender neutral. But if we move to option three, that is a possibility that we could do, correct?
Correct, correct. In fact, one of the code issues that your library does not have now is we're required to have a family restroom. And many jurisdictions are now making that a gender-neutral facility as well.
Great. And before I turn it over to my colleagues, I just have one other question, which is in the design for a replacement library. Could you talk about just a little bit about, it's, it's very open, the design. I know we've talked about this in the past, but having enough meeting rooms, like smaller rooms, especially for like study groups or other things. And I don't know, probably not many people here remember, but that you also were involved with the downtown Silver Spring Library. And I know from talking to folks there that the, some of those, the rooms that they have there are being heavily used.
I think that one of the things that we wanted to explore, and that is a very important thing with any library today, is flexibility. And so one of the things we're trying to prove that is that within the same shape, that one could develop any number of different interior arrangements. And working with the library staff, we've simply identified two small group study rooms. There could be four, there could be six. But I think that over the last couple of years, to be honest with you, it's given both of the staff and all of people that are associated with us some opportunity to think about really what could be in the library and what it could use. So you're absolutely right. The, there's a huge demand for group study rooms, individual study rooms, tutoring rooms, literacy rooms. And so it's always difficult to know how many is the appropriate number. But certainly, there is enough flexibility that in all these cases, we exceeded both the current printed collection as well as the opportunity to bring in electronic media and CD.
Great. And I forgot to announce before we dove into this that we had word today that we are actually receiving our bond bill from the state. So we will have a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the state towards this project. And this is the second bond bill that we've received from the state. So we'll have upwards of three hundred thousand dollars assistance from the state. So we just got that and we want to thank our delegation, particularly our State Senator Will Smith, for all his work on that. All right, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. So you can get that into three hundred thousand?
It's always a start.
Okay, I, I really appreciate the, the presentation. And I, I have to say, I'm kind of thrilled with the, you know, some of the design proposals you've made because they, they're so much better than what we had before. And I, I think we were pleased with the ones before. But now with the, the additional reconfiguration you've done and especially the rebuild option that you've proposed, you know, has some real advantages office space-wise and also with the rec department. But I really think, and I've mentioned it before to my colleagues, that I think that we have a responsibility to be a little more forward-thinking. And I think that your presentation tonight about the floodplain emphasizes the importance of us thinking further ahead. And I would like to see us consider a fourth option, which is building a new library, as you suggest, at a new site that would be the first step towards the relocation of the community center municipal buildings and higher ground. For example, the current location of Washington Adventist Hospital, which is possibly going to become available soon. And I think looking at the floodplain and thinking about, well, what happens, you know, downstream, if I can use that, you know, with the municipal building itself, when we want to expand that or renovate this building, we're going to face the similar challenges that you're talking about with the library. And yet, the basement, which is our police department right now, is located below the, the ground level, which will present additional challenges. And parking is already a challenge here. So I think that it's reasonable to think a little further ahead than just what do we want tomorrow? And, and think about, you know, what do we need for the future for the city? And I'll leave it at that and just try to encourage my colleagues to think if this isn't the right time to, to talk about that. Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Senator Smith? Thank you. I would like to concur with my colleague. I think that, you know, I remember when we first started the library project and it was a two-point-five-million-dollar idea. Now, I think we're up to nine million dollars. That includes the soft costs. So it's really expensive. It's gotten very expensive. And we do have an opportunity with the Washington Adventist Hospital campus. And I think it would be great if we could explore that and see what options are possible rather than sinking in so much money raising a library and then rebuilding it. And we would like to, I would think, expand the community center because, you know, residents have said that they would like more options here. And the meeting rooms that we do have here are occupied most of the time. So I, I would like to concur with my colleague and I hope that we can have a further discussion about the Washington Adventist Hospital site and possibly a new library and community center. Thank you.
Councilwoman DiBala?
Well, my questions are a little more, a little less grand. But I was hoping we could back up a step for those of us who are new on the council and talk about the design, the previous design in terms of what that was going to look like, height to ceiling, all of those things. Because as I was listening to you, I wondered if some of those same things were true of the design for renovating the, the existing space without lifting the floor level. I also have a question about the hundred-year floodplain definition. Based on what, what definition, what, what, what year's worth of data?
Okay.
Because that, that's a moving target these days.
Understood. I'll explain the, or answer the first question first. Initially, for the original design, we kept the footprint of the existing building and then expanded it in roughly the same shape. And that ceiling on the expansion was raised. It was our understanding at the time that the flood wall, the top of the flood wall, was the height at which we could construct the first floor. And because that flood wall goes down to zero at the parking lot, the design actually had the door to the library from the parking lot side. So the idea was that it could be, you could walk directly in from the parking lot and we would be fine because the flood wall really was intended, there was no flood wall on that side. And so that was the proposal. So the ceiling was kept at the nine-foot height, the existing ceiling, and the expansion popped up to plus or minus thirteen feet. And so that seemed to be a reasonable approach. The data that was ta, was used, and I'll do the best I can because I was not the author of the floodplain study, that we hired two different firms who specialize in, in doing this, was, was taken last year, or at least the engineering study was taken last year. It's hard to, and it's not based on when it rains. It is based on the capacity, the theoretical capacity of all the underground piping and the amount of water that after a hundred-year flood, which is calculated by, I don't know whether it's the Corps of Engineers or whoever establishes that, but the Corps of Engineers establishes floodplanes. And they simply did a hydraulic study of taking all the sections of, of the low points and how high it would go up the banks and the amount of water and what would stop the water and how the water could go from upstream to downstream. Already in, sort of, in the front of your building, you have gigantic underground pipes. They are six feet in diameter, a whole series of them under the parking lot where the police park, that were designed, when this building, I suspect, was designed, to take all that water because they realized it was going to come rushing down, to slow it down as it keeps going downhill. So you're sort of at the uphill part of that. And because of the topography, particularly, you know, where the school is and the, the grades come down, and from the other side of the road, grades come down and it constricts here and then it begins to open up, but it, it builds. And so there's a study of hydrology, basically, and then all the ways the water can be relieved to go downstream.
And so moving the door allows you to keep the, to, to raise the floor less?
In effect, because if I go back to this diagram right here, and you notice that the floodplain is, or the flood level, I should say, the floodplain is floodplain. The flood level goes down as the topography goes down. So the farther we move the door toward this two oh nine point five three, and if we have to be a foot above, we have to be.
Foot above the door.
Two ten point five three rather than if it was a two ten point oh three to eleven. So it simply tells us what the delta might be between the existing floor of the community center and the floor, uh, floor level of the library.
But doing that, you still aren't moving, in your opinion, enough to make it.
Right. And we explored a number of different options on trying to relieve that height and to lower that height, even covering the open parking here to allow the water to wash around the building as opposed to going downhill into that.
Right. If you can imagine, the water's coming down Philadelphia and it's coming down pretty fast. And so one of the things was like, can you channel it around onto Maple Avenue? You know, is there, is there that? And so we, we looked at a variety of options with the various engineers. It is a fascinating process. We were all, I think, relieved that the simplest action actually seemed to be the, the best to, to address the floodplain level.
One last question on the three designs that you show that are all included in option three. Is there any significant construction cost difference that you can see at this point between those three designs?
No. In effect, they're show, they're illustrating, and big quotes, a box. It's a curved box in front. And it was a way of illustrating to the library staff that within that container, we could rearrange the library in a number of different ways. And one of the explorations was how do these different designs impact the operation of the library and the relationship with the staff, to patrons and, and the flow of materials and who should be next to who? So they were simply very simple explorations to determine whether there was a big difference.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Councilwoman Kostic?
Thank you for the presentation. I just wanted to follow up on the floodplain specifically and the implications for the community center. I know that wasn't specifically what you were looking at. Am I understanding correctly here that the two oh nine point five three is the level at the community center?
It's at that line.
Okay.
You know, that's about the best I can do. It's, you don't have a door there. And so in effect, what you're trying to do is make sure that door is above so the water doesn't come in.
So and a foot above is.
That's correct. And that's simply a code-mandated number. So they recognize that there's a flood, a hundred-year flood level that could frankly happen every year, it's just the amount of rain that might happen. So it's a, a number that the, and I don't even know whether it's the Corps or the county has set that to be safe, take the hundred-year flood level and raise your floor a foot.
And in terms of the designs, when you are looking at the option of totally redesigning, what, what did you base the shape of the building on? Did you work on, work with what was sort of already there? Or did you have an opportunity to think differently about that?
If you look at this diagram and you look at where the yellow is and you look at where the orange is and you look at where the white is in this plan, the white shape is your existing library, okay? The yellow is new additions where we have labeled as program room. That's your, that little courtyard between the community center and the library. The lounge is actually overhanging that thin area outside the conference room there in the community center. So we said, gee, could we span that short distance and gain usable space for either the community center or the library? And the yellow in front is about as far as we could go without killing the major trees in front. And so in effect, that is simply the outside limits of potential development. So it wasn't necessarily supposed to be a design as much as a definition of, that's about as big a library as one could construct in the available space.
And I don't know if you have this figure with you right now, but what would the size difference be in comparison to the current library?
The current library is about.
Oh, I guess it says at the bottom.
Ninety-eight, about ten thousand.
About ninety-eight hundred square feet.
Yeah, just under ten thousand. And this is showing about eighteen thousand eight hundred.
So it essentially doubles it.
Yes, almost doubles it.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Searcy?
Thank you so much for your time and it's been a great presentation. I do share some of the concerns that have been raised by Councilmembers Siemens and Smith about the long-term impacts. And I'm new to all of this, so correct me if I'm wrong. It, it, it kind of seems like what we're trying to do is make the library better, given the constraints of the current floodplain that we have.
Correct.
And trying to raise it, for lack of better words. But it doesn't necessarily impact the impact, the, the effect of the floodplain on the rest of the building. Is that correct?
Correct, that is correct.
So it's not the case that by leveling the thing, building something new, we're not doing any regrading, repiping or anything that would ultimately help alleviate the impact of the floodplain on that dip, right? That two oh nine to the two oh five.
That's correct. However, your, the basic door to the community center is a foot and your floor level is a foot above the floodplain now. Just so happens because the flood level's going down, so.
So in terms of just what you know about, you know, we talk a lot about climate change here and the impacts of things, right? Would this solution that you're, that you're proposing now hold up? I mean, I'm not, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm asking you to predict the future and I know, I, we don't have a crystal ball. But one of my concerns is that we're kind of kicking the can on the inevitable, which might be that this site is problematic and that we may ultimately find ourselves in a similar situation down the line, perhaps not with the library, but maybe with other aspects of the building and the impact of the floodplain. Would it make sense for us to take a look at the entire building and the impact that this project would have on the floodplain as it relates to the other aspects of the community center?
Well, it's interesting you ask that.
We actually did that as part of this discussion.
Okay.
So I did, you know, we, just want you to know, staff is very concerned as well and, and wanted to pers, you know, push all of the buttons on this. And so I, I do want to, to indicate, and I don't want to take too much of your time, but I, I do want you to know that I would not be recommending, moving forward, with this rebuilding of the library if I thought this was, was simply giving us ten years or twenty years or something. I do think that this is a reasonable approach. And I do think that the community center, it does need a, a couple tweaks where the flood wall comes. And, you know, we keep working with the doors, kind of, that block the police department. But there's some ways to deal with that. So it's, it's something that's, can be dealt with as opposed to it's a bad design that we'll need to like really spend lots of money on. So just wanted to let you know that we did go through with some of the engineers on that. There'll be more to look at, but it, I was convinced that it is a doable and reasonable approach.
Yeah, one thing, the flood level is not liable. Yeah, one thing, the flood level is not liable to ever go up. And part of the study that was done 10 years ago for flood mitigation identified things, regulatory things, that suggest that you don't allow new construction, let's say, above that would increase the floodwaters as they come down. And so your regulations now are not going to allow things to fill in which would tend to raise the flood level. You're a fully built-out community for all practical purposes. So it's not that, it's not like you're at the coast where, you know, global warming or climate change is going to raise the sea level. It's that through good practices, you are controlling what's being developed upstream to enable you to make sure that the flood level doesn't go up.
The other thing is that when they do these studies, they don't assume availability of all of the, the pipes and things underneath. There's some look at that, but one of the things that's very frustrating is that there's a whole series that you go through that says, we're going to pretend that the six, two six-foot diameter pipes are already full before we start this exercise, and we're going to, you know, try these various things. So we don't assume that it's, it's just, it's just empty. We often, on parts of this, they assume that it's full. And, and frankly, to me, that's really important because when we're looking at resiliency throughout the community, the problems that we've been finding is that after a couple weeks of rain, there's no saturation left in the ground. And so even a small rain causes problems for people. So that's why I've been particularly attentive to this and looking at this. That said, these are models, and so we have to do the best we can at, you know, does this seem to be a practical answer, and does this make sense for us?
Thank you.
Councilwoman Kovar?
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation, appreciate it. Just a few questions I did want to ask. So in, in option three, I believe it is with the rebuild, so you were talking about how the space between the ceiling and the roof would, that would enable that to be larger than it currently is or could be under the modified rebuild. So does that mean that the overall height then would be a little bit higher?
Oh, absolutely. If you have a rebuild, then you can do whatever you want at that point, and it can be built properly.
But so is there an estimate of what the, how much higher it would be under that? Would it just be like four feet higher?
It's a matter of design. I mean, it would probably not be less than 10 feet clear, and then you'd have the appropriate space above the ceiling. If you look at any new office building or commercial building-
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, you're talking less than 20 feet total.
Yes, oh, yes, yes.
Compared to, what's the current?
The current's about 10.
It's nine-foot ceiling now with another, maybe, with the structure and the space, maybe another, maybe two feet, maybe 11 feet tall.
So it might be a four-foot, five-foot difference.
Okay. So on the location of the doors, I know we talked about that a lot, but just to, just to be clear, so right now, there's a door, there's one door that's really, one access point off the parking lot that leads you into the community center and then down through the hallway, or there's two separate hallways, really. And then the other one, you walk down that pathway off of the parking lot, and then you come in kind of that side door, right? So that one wouldn't be there anymore, it would be further along-
Correct.
-in the parking lot. So is that a, a big difference in distance from, from that point? I'm just thinking about-
Not a huge difference.
Because you don't have to walk along the side of the building anymore, right? But it's a little bit further.
It's a little bit further.
Okay.
One of the things that's not here that I think is, is going to be very important is what the outside around the building looks and feels like because right now, people sometimes find the library difficult to approach, and we don't want something where you see a building and they don't even see where the door is. And so making sure that entrances are very prominent and visible, that it's a clear walking path and biking path that gets there, that there's, if there's other paths, you know, they, they're landscaped in such a way as to not mislead you about where you're going, because right now, you can end up in the, down in the parking garage when you don't know why. And so, so we don't have that, we've been spending the time on the floodplain and on, you know, can we work with this design? But to me, one of the big things that I think is important, it's certainly important to me, but I think is important to the community, is what does this look like and how approachable is it? Because we want this to feel like a wonderful community facility.
So, thank you. Two other questions, and this is less for Mr. Lookmeyer and more for the city manager. But so the, the option three, which is demolish and construct is 7.5 million. We, we have the bond of 7 million, we've had these two, I don't know if they're both still unused, the 250,000, so that's, that's almost up to that.
Right.
Does that literally mean we have to find this other money somewhere, or are there other things we could do to change the way?
So, so besides the $7 million bond, we have a couple million dollars' worth of the cable grant funds that are, we anticipated would go into this construction as well because so much of this is, you need to have it ready for multimedia, you got a program room, you've got a variety of ways that the lounge could be used. So there's a, so that's something that has always been talked about in terms of this budget. I'm still comfortable with the budget.
So I guess what I'm saying is if, to the extent that we can keep it at 7 million-
I don't want to spend money just for spending money. I'm very, I'm very tight on that.
So the last thing is, just if we can go back, one last question on the, I appreciate that my colleagues mentioned this about the climate change and so on. So do people in your profession, you know, kind of wonder about whether these 100-year numbers are meaningful? Because, you know, I, I remember once when I was involved with, with stuff in Massachusetts, and they said, well, you know, they had 200-year floods in like, within three years, and that was sort of then, all that stuff kept happening. And I know we've had instances when the, when there has been flooding in the entrances to this. So, I mean, I know, again, as, as one of my colleagues said, you can't predict the future, but what do people in your profession think about when they think about these things, these days?
Well, at this point, we have to design to regulations, and we don't set the regulations. We can agree with them or disagree, but we have to accept them as parameters to design to. And Corps of Engineers is the body that sets floodplanes all over the country. They always review them. Interestingly enough, the study that was done here 10 years ago didn't really identify the height or exactly where it was. It simply agreed that there was a flooding issue. I don't, I have yet to been able to find how the top of that wall was set, who set it, where the data came from, we, we just don't know. And so the county said, we don't have data, and so you have to set, you have to go through the proper procedures to help us to establish what the flood level and, where the floodplain is and what the level is. So it's partly a science, I sus- suspect there's probably some art to it, you know?
For, for me, I, I err a little bit to the more cautious. And so one of the things that will happen in any event is that the parking lot will get redone. It will not get redone in the more dramatic way that, you know, would accomplish, accomplish the flood rerouting. But right now, the way the parking lot is sloped, slopes right into our building, and that doesn't make sense. So there are areas where water has come in that's simply, part of what we intended to do all along was to redo the parking lot at a, at a better design that includes the, you know, low-impact storm water treatment and those kinds of things. So that's, that's not to at all the extent that would accomplish a floodplain reduction, but it certainly gets rid of our surprises when all of a sudden some water comes in the back door because it's right there.
The only thing I mentioned is, I mean, we're talking about taking steps all around the city to try to address this, and in fact, I had a landscaper out at my house today to deal with some of the drainage issues I've got, and I just want to mention that they will be coming back with our tree, with, with our city arborists to make sure that the work that they do is done correctly, but we're looking at doing that. So I just, I would just want to make sure that we don't just kind of just do the minimum and not miss an opportunity to, if it could be done within the same format that we have here, to possibly make it a little bit better than just, you know, I mean, one foot doesn't sound like that much, so.
Understood.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
I do have one question for the city manager. I, I'm hearing a lot of discussion about other improvements that will need to be made to the community center, perhaps. It would be helpful to know the full budget for this renovation and dealing with the floodplain issues in the building. That would help with not just thinking about what would need to happen in terms of, you know, redoing the library, but also, you know, to my colleagues' points raised earlier, what is the true cost of us addressing issues at this site as it relates to flooding?
Sure. And, and we had had some of those numbers to you before, but I'll put them in a single place so that you have them. And, you know, I think they're not overly expensive, but I will put them into one place and share them with you. I'd also like to note that when, when we're talking about cost, moving to another location has purchase price and moving costs that are very extensive. So while you may choose that you don't want to own this site anymore, or at least have facilities on this site, that's certainly up to you, that is a remarkably large cost and would require a lot of discussion.
Great. And I would just like to emphasize that we start, we've started, we've been talking about this library renovation for a very long time. I see Mr. Lefler in the audience and want to thank him for all his work on this, as well as our staff at the library. And, you know, I think it was actually when I first came on the city council and I represented Ward III that we were talking about putting this in the budget, and it was at that point that we talked about the fact that our library is really being held together by a lot of love and duct tape, and there is an HVAC system that we're basically crossing our fingers on right now, and that this is a heavily, heavily used resource in our community because of its location near three schools and our community center. So while I think it's wise for us to consider other options, I also think there, there's, there's a huge hurdle to thinking about completely moving our community center, our city offices, our library, to a location that we don't own and would cost a great deal of money to purchase. So I would just like to urge us to seriously consider taking the next steps in looking at this library renovation because my concern is that we prolong something and we're no longer left with the option of having a library available to the community. So I would just ask the city manager what next steps are and-
Sure. Well, I would like to make sure that this council continues to want to pursue the detailed design of this library. That's the next step, since we have, I think, a pretty good footprint, the exterior wall design makes a lot of sense in terms of the facility, but the detailed design is the next part of his contract. It is budgeted for. The city has, council has authorized, and we have, a $7 million bond that can only be spent on the library. The, I would like to get that, the actual information and estimates for the costs are in the budget and will be in the budget. It will come back to you when the detailed design is ready to be sent out for bids. And so that's something, that's a point when you have an up and down vote as to whether to proceed. But I would like to have the support now to make sure that Mr. Lookmeyer can continue to do the detailed design work for this facility.
All right. Does anyone have any questions on that?
I just have a quick question. So does that mean, does this come back to us soon and we decide which of these three general options related to the floodplain we're pursuing?
I'm sorry. No, that's a good question. I recommend, I strongly recommend the option three, which is to, to build a new library at this, at the higher floor level. It makes a much better facility for us, it gives a lot more flexibility for the kinds of functioning and needs that we have, and the cost is really quite in line, I think, with, with what an appropriate library would be. So that would be my recommendation for him to pursue the engineering detailed design for that, for that option three.
Okay. All right.
And if he'd like to talk about this another time, that's fine, but I, but that's what I'd need to have to go forward.
So I'd like to just see a show of hands on who is ready to have us move, yes, Councilwoman Dibala?
Yeah, I just, I would like to ask if it's possible to get, you referred to some information about having looked at the option of going somewhere else and that you had collected some information about that. That would be useful for me.
I don't have information about going somewhere else, I just know how much, the kinds of things that it requires to purchase, other land, and then you'd have to, the costs of moving. I've not calculated that out. It's, it's large, though.
And let me, the money that we've already borrowed, the $7 million we already borrowed is to renovate this library-
That's correct.
-here. That money could not be transferred over if we moved, or we don't know the answer.
I don't know, that would be a legal question.
Yeah. So.
I mean, it, it defines it at this location.
Mm-hmm. All right, so all those in favor of moving to the next step with the recommendation three of a new library with more detailed designs from Mr. Lookmeyer? Do I have one, two, three?
No, four.
Oh, four. Councilwoman Dibala?
Okay.
So we'll move on to the next step.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Lookmeyer. I look forward to the next step. All right, our next presentation this evening, we have Neighborhood Development Company with us to report out on the meeting that took place, so just yesterday morning, and where we are with this project. And I think those microphones should be on. I'm not controlling those.
Hello?
Hello?
Yeah.
All right, and I think, do you want, you have a presentation? Do you want to start on that, or you want to start?
We do. So, yeah, I can see it here, but I don't see it up there.
It's probably thinking about it.
Okay.
Just a moment. I think they're trying to fix something. But in, in any event, we've got Adrian Washington and Jingjing Liu here to give an update on the Tacoma Junction project, some of the changes that have come about as going into the county review process, and kind of a, a update on the discussion with the Development Review Committee and some of the other county agencies as you've been going through. And there you go, it's, it's starting to come up. Yes, good night everyone, good. Okay. So, Adrian, it's over to you.
All right, well, thank you very much. Good evening, everyone, good evening to you, Mayor Stewart, the members of the city council, city staff in attendance, and the public in attendance, as well as online. We're very pleased to be here again before all of you, and we are happy to present this update. We have a brief presentation, I assume it'll take, you know, 10 minutes or so, and then we are open to answering your questions. So, our agenda is very brief. We're going to talk about what we've been working on since the last time we reported. Of course, you know, as you know, regular updates are communicated between staff, the council, ourselves, we have a weekly process, so just a lot of updates, but it's, you know, we wanted to give you sort of a fuller idea in public of what we've been working on since the last time we were here. I want to go through updated new site plan, which of course is, I'm sure is a topic of a lot of interest, and then we're going in the process. So what we've been working on, so as part, as I guess sort of the last major action when the city council approved our, our site plan, we then moved to the Montgomery County approval process. So we held a pre-submital meeting with the community, I believe it was one of the local high schools here, reviewed the plan and submission process, that was in November. We submitted the initial application to Montgomery County on December 18th, received initial comments from the county back on January 15th, so that was sort of a very bare-bones comment. At the request of the council of the, of the county, and we'll get into more in detail of that, as I understand, there was confusion about that, we completely submitted a by-right plan, which- We completely submitted a buy right plan, which is smaller than the plan, which is, you know, we believe, we'll talk about it, we, is uh essentially the same plan, but it is smaller than the plan that we presented the last time. We did that at the county's request on January thirty-first. Uh, then we submitted our formal set of applications, which involved a lot more detail, to the county. It was accepted by the county on February fourteenth. We received a comment very late, um, in my experience, um, from the Development Review Committee uh on March fifteenth. And then we met with the, the DRC on March nineteenth, and we'll talk about those comments. Those comments have been made public, and I'm sure there are many questions people have about those. So, let's talk about the new updated site plan. The garage is, again, essentially the same. It's about the exa, you know, pretty close to the same dimensions that uh the plan that the uh council approved. We shifted some things around. Again, all part of the process, we are developers, of sort of taking a uh sort of a more of a concept, and as you dig more into the details, you find out more about. So, one of the things we had in the old site plan was tandem parking. That's where you sort of park in a space and then in order to, you know, get another car and they have to park in front, it has moved around. We thought it wasn't a good idea. We removed that. We added more motorcycle and scooter parking in line of what we're seeing in trends and development of people using more vehicles like that. And also along that, that line, we added car sharing, uh parking as part of that. So, again, to make it what we think is more in line of sort of twenty-first century uh parking um spaces. We added ADA parking spaces. We added the motorcycle scoot, scooter spaces altogether. Uh, it's about fifty-three parking spaces. So, probably a slight drop in the number of parking spaces that we had before.
No, the, the fifty-three parking spaces is a, is a regular space, so total is seventy-nine spaces, if you add up all of the.
Oh, okay, all right, thank you. Uh, there's the site plan for the ground floor.
Can I back up for a minute? I, I didn't understand that point.
Yeah, so, so, so the like, if you add like three ADA parking, ten scooter spaces, four car share, and since one car share equal to three parking spaces, so four car share spaces equal to twelve parking spaces. So, if you add three plus ten plus twelve plus one plus fifty-three, which is equal to seventeen-nine.
Uh, the ground floor is essentially the same as before, and what we decided to do with the, uh, by reducing the project was essentially to cut out that sort of wedge shape in the back there. So, reduce the square footage, so we removed about seventy-three hundred square feet from the back space. That back space we used as uh additional green roof, so even though, uh, and it's funny, we had this conversation earlier. It's a green roof because it's a roof over the garage, but really, if you looked, if you walked out the back, you would just think it was green walking out the back of the, of the first floor. So, the gross square footage is low over nineteen thousand square feet. The net square footage is pretty, i- is a much higher ratio to the gross before, because one of the things we could do, we compared our old plan, is we had a sort of corridor in the back and sort of extra space. And so, one of the things we did when we lost square footage was that we were able to take out some of the, you know, sort of the corridor space from it. So, our net square footage is eighteen thousand three hundred and six square feet. The uh, the details you see there from the plan are, again, are, you know, suggestive, you know, we're not saying it has to be a restaurant of six thousand one hundred and twenty-three square feet, et cetera. These are just sort of our ideas of how it will be laid out. And then the second floor is essentially the same. Um, again, there's sort of that, you know, we just took a piece out of the back, removed it. Removed about five thousand square, five thousand four hundred square feet from that, so the gross square footage of that is twenty-one thousand three hundred and seventy-six square feet. Uh, what we did in the site plan on the roof, we shifted the, the green roof around a bit. It still has the required amount of green roof space needed for stormwater management. We added uh second means of egress in the roof deck. This was sort of a technical addition uh that uh in the review process it came up. So, total green roof area is about eighteen thousand three hundred and six square feet. Uh, what sort of the new site, I mean, we really think it's really, essentially, it's the same site. The things that we thought were exciting and necessary and really added to what we're trying to do have not changed. The facade and setback in Carroll Avenue is the same as it was before. The lay-by for deliveries to uh our stores, as well as the co-op, is unchanged. The public spaces that we spent a lot of time detailing uh with you in previous council meetings are on change. The access point to the underground garage is in the same place, next to, adjoining next to the Healy Building. Uh, the green area for stormwater management uh is unchanged. It might be shifted a bit, but it's, it's what's required, or is it?
The, the area that uh didn't change, uh, just to remove the front top to ground.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then the plans for the wooded area along Columbia Avenue are unchanged as well. So, where we're going, next steps, um, so as I said, we had our meeting with the Development Review Committee um two days ago, or yesterday?
Yesterday.
I'm sorry, I've been out of town. It's, it's, was it really yesterday?
Yeah.
Oh, my God, okay, it's been a busy week. We had the meeting yesterday, um, and so we have a number of plans. Uh, we, you know, we consider this a normal part of the give and take review process, and so we will be responding uh to those by April third. A meeting with Tacoma Park uh Tree Commission to talk specifically and mostly about the wooded area on April fifteenth. We'll submit plans to the Historic Preservation Commission, HBC. Uh, preliminary consultation, we'll submit those by April third, and we're targeting to meet with them by April twenty-fourth. And, you know, one of the things that, you know, we're, you know, I'll be honest, we're not happy about is, is to pace the State Highway Administration study. Um, we want to meet with them and we want the city to work with them. Um, you know, the delays they're talking about, to just study intersection re, re, refiger, reconfiguration. We're having a hard time understanding their timeline, and so we're seeking to meet with them and ask them to explain and ask them to work with us to speed up the process. So, we have a busy month. We've had a busy few months in the past. We had a busy month ahead of us. This is where we're going. And we are now open, I'm sure, you know, there might be one or two questions, so we'll be happy to address them.
Um, given the comments um at the DRC meeting yesterday, do we know whether or not the um planning board, the date for this is still what they had scheduled, or have we heard back yet?
So, we've not heard a def, a definitive thing, and I think it comes a little bit from the future conversations that they have.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, so typically, so there will be like two round uh resubmission uh to the DRC and the for the normal uh project process, the after the two summi, resubmission, there will be, so the DRC will submit the final report to the planning board. And then there, there will be a sixty-five days period between the final submission and the pu, public hearing. Uh, but for this case, since the, the intersection reconfiguration is the, will delay our project, so we may need to ask a, an extension um for this.
That's right. So, if, if indeed, um, as was suggested by some of the comments in the DRC, that the um there won't be any comments on this plan for transportation matters until the fall, after the S H A visioning study is done, um, then it wouldn't be able to go to the planning board until after those comments would come in and, and see what that would mean. So, um, it does, it does push it out several months.
Mm-hmm, okay, but after the final DRC report, that's then when the clock's, the clock starts ticking for the planning board meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
So.
I'm just thinking of our process.
Right, so, but our process is a little, uh, also, we can weigh in on that.
Mm-hmm.
Um, let's, whatever date, um, after the DRC, the planning board is scheduled for, because it's a because there's committee among the various jurisdictions and boards, uh, there would be respect for a council, a city council, uh, request for um, if there's some delay is needed from the planning board, so that you can take your consideration and get your comments to the planning board. So, it's a common practice that they would work with you on, on the states and not, not put you in a box particularly. So, although, you know, we certainly with our partners want to move things along, we also want to make sure that we take the time that it's needed to do the review and to do the appropriate comments in public process. So, um, that's something we're just going to have to see how it goes, and ultimately, you're in the driver's seat.
Great, thank you. And um if we could just go back to the parking for a second, because I think there are a lot of questions on that to understand it. And um Jing Jing, I know you were on the call we had on Friday, so I just want to make sure we're all really clear when we're talking about the numbers regarding the parking spaces, because I think there's been some confusion. Um, so, um, my understanding, what you said before, is that there will be, I'm going to start from the bottom and go up. Fifty-three, right now, what is um in the draft is that there are fifty-three regular parking spaces.
Yeah.
All right, and then there's the one parking space for the co-op.
Yeah.
And four car share spaces. Explain car share spaces.
So, it's like a Zipcar, uh, so, it's like the, it's like the way to try to en, encourage people to not uh drive uh that much, uh, to share cars. So, we feel like that, that's idea in line with the master plan, so we, uh, we decide to add four, uh, since you cannot add too much, since if people don't use, it's a waste of the space, but we do want to add some, uh, but so we feel like the four spaces are like a balance, um, so.
Okay, and you said before that when the, um, we look at counting up the number of spaces, I know you've also applied for a waiver on the parking spaces. A car share parking space counts as
Three.
Three regular spots.
Yeah, yeah, one equals three, yeah.
Okay, that's the part I was confused on before. Okay, so then that is the twelve. And then ten motorcycle scooter parking spaces, and then the three ADA parking spaces. And then you've requested a waiver for
For twelve, so based on the U R I share parking model analysis, we, our required uh parking space is ninety-one. Uh, so currently, if we add up all of those uh parking, it's like seventeen, seventy-nine. Yeah, so, we, we need a twelve parking waiver.
Great, and while we're on parking, I'm going to ask one more question. Um, one of the things that we had been talking about for over the last few years is the fact that um parking would be available not just to um the folks who were um conducting business here and visiting here, but open to all the Tacoma Junction businesses. And thinking about having the seventy-nine spaces, um, you know, I guess we've had questions about whether or not that is enough to also accommodate people visiting other shops and things in the area.
I mean, we believe it is. I mean, and we're, you know, we studied these trends. We, we look at what's currently going on, and we also look to the future in terms of different modes of transportation, like car sh, sharing, like, you know, like Uber, like Lyft, like the future driverless cars, things like that and different patterns. And so, we feel, and again, we, you know, we always want to emphasize that we are the ones taking the financial risk of this and that if the project is not successful, we're the ones bearing that front. And so, we've studied it and we feel very ca, we feel very comfortable that there is, you know, more than adequate parking, both for the customers of this project, of the co-op, and of the other businesses in the junction.
Great, um, do my council members have any comments? Like Councilwoman Kostick, you can continue at parking, I think.
Well, that, that helps a lot. I was confused when you first presented it. Um, in terms of those car share spaces, it surprises me a little. I guess I'd be interested in knowing what the trends are in terms of people using things like Zipcar. It, it seems like that's sort of gone down a little bit in recent years, since people have started to use Uber and Lyft more. Um, so four seems a little high to me. Um, I'm, it, just kind of pontificating on that a, as I'm looking at it. Um, I have a series of other questions. Um, first of all, you mentioned briefly earlier in the presentation that you could go into some more detail about um the request to submit the buy right plan.
Mm-hmm.
Could you explain a little more about how that, I know we've talked about it before, but if you could just explain a little more about how that happened and
Okay.
And how we got to where we are right now.
Okay, that's a good story. Uh, so, you know, fair, you know, shortly after, um, we, you know, we met with you and you approved our larger plan, uh, we found out honestly that we'd made a mistake. We believed that the zoning laws allowed uh using the wooded lot and taking some densely from that, and so that what you could build on the uh, the flat portion of the site essentially was, was not what we thought. You couldn't do that. And um we were, it's embarrassing and it's, it's, it's bad, but, you know, it's what it was. And so, what could be built by right there was smaller than what we had proposed to you. So, we went on a couple of tracks. One is that we started to think about what a buy right plan would look like and, you know, we hadn't drawn it up yet, but we sort of, sort of looked at different things, you know, where should we cut out? And we, we kind of knew what we were going to beside the doubt. We also went, though, on a different track of trying to buy densely um from additional property owners. And we thought that was the best way to accomplish it. Uh, we thought that there were adjoining property owners, they had densely, they were never going to use. They were not going to, you know, build any higher, they were not going to build any wider, and the way the zoning laws worked was additional density. We uh, we approached the adjoining property owners and we were surprised. I mean, you know, we thought that at least one or two would be up for that. I don't know if it's just general kind of fear that's been put out in the community or whatever reason, but we thought, you know, to me, if I, someone came to me and said, I'll buy something from you that you could never use and here's some money, we thought there'd be people receptive. They weren't. So, we did that over, I'd say, over several months, and then sort of the holidays intervened, and we, we didn't, there was really sort of no, like, firm cutoff, but we sort of felt that we'd give ourselves some time to do this, and if it wasn't working, we'd go with the buy right plan. So, sort of, you know, after the holidays into, you know, January, into January, and it's one thing like Jing Jing and I discussed a lot of how far we should go. We reached a point where we said it's not going to work and that this density was not for sale, people didn't want it uh sell. And so, we then decided to go, you know, with the buy right plan. But during this time, and I think there was confusion, and I know particularly you, a council member, um, and I apologize, um, felt that we created confusion. We had always sort of saw this as a two-track strategy, that we could either buy this density and build the plan we originally had, or we couldn't, and we would submit a s, a smaller project. And we went down both those tracks and, you know, and we can go back and forth on the exact timing, but sort of towards, you know, this January thirty-first timeline, you know, from our minds as developers, we said, okay, you know, the track of buying additional density is, it's not going to work. And so, you know, we, you know, the couns, the county, and there was some confusion about what was like Plan A versus Plan B. We always considered it just like two parallel plans. And so, when we finally determined, okay, we're going to cut it off, we're not going to try to buy any additional density, we submitted the buy right plan formally to the county as like our Plan A, and so, is, that's what happened.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
So, looking at this plan, I, I have one specific question about it, and then I have some more questions related to the DRC feedback. So, looking at the first floor here, um, it hadn't occurred to me until actually recently that I hadn't realized that this back corridor for people taking out trash and um deliveries, moving back there, is open. Um, that's not part of the building now. And so, I'm wondering how that interacts with the side corridor where the staircase is. Is that, is this the portion where the staircase is inside, I assume? And then there's a door. I don't see a door of any kind here, or where the two sort of meet up.
So, I'm, Jing Jing, correct me if I say something wrong, but, so, I mean, the, essentially, the way you would get there, you see little doors in the back of the, um, of the, the various shops there. That would still be the route to take out trash. Instead of like being a corridor that's inside of the prior building now, you know, it's a pathway outside. It would still go to the trash room. The trash room is still enclosed as before. So, it operates very similarly to um the prior setup, and again, the idea there is trash should be stored there. It would be controlled and that it would not be sort of sitting out either outside on the curb. It would be coordinated with trash pickup that would occur in the lay-by, and then when a trash truck came, the, the roll-offs would be rolled out there and, and emptied there.
And then what is the, um, it's showing here, there's a little section, I know you can't see where I'm pointing, but there's a little section um next to the co-op building.
I think that is the elevator, the additional elevator where I
I'm talking about actually in the back, near the green roof. There looks like there's a little, it, would that be, is that the physical wall of
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's the
Because the second floor overhangs it a little bit, is that correct? And so, that's the wall supporting the second floor?
You mean the ne, next to the co-op building?
Yeah, there's sort of like an L shape on the right-hand lower, lower right-hand side, next to the co-op building.
Yeah, that, that's the wall for the green, uh, that part of the green roof.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, there's a wall that's sort of So there's a wall that sort of goes along there, and then there's access to the, for the co-op loading dock there, is that correct? I don't know if I'm understanding that, and it's hard to see on this, so I can take a closer look at the plans as well.
Yeah, I think so, yeah.
No, the white box, yeah, yeah.
But I, I will make more clarification with the architect, uh, later.
Okay, thanks, yeah, I was just trying to understand how that all interacts there. So, um, my other questions then are related to the feedback that you got from the DRC. Um, some of which it sounds like is easier to manage within the constraints of what you have designed here, and others that seem like what you have designed is really problematic, if, if those are the constraints that you need to meet. So, what, what do you do with that? Where do you go from here? What's the next step in terms of reviewing, reviewing what you have and, how do you see it being able to fit in with the comments that you've heard?
So, I'll make, Jing Jing, dr- you know, again, jump in if I miss anything, I mean, I, first of all, again, sort of review the development process, i- it's kind of like, you know, it's, it's almost like writing like a, a, a novel. And, you know, you have a draft and then you have an editor who helps you and you kind of do it, I mean, it was, you know, and I, this project really sort of been like a small novel, it's getting to be more like War and Peace, but, you know. So anyway, so I view, I view most of these comments as fairly routine. Um, I think that they are, and again, remember, it is staff, it is, it is meant to be an iterative process, where staff expresses their opinion and sometimes, you know, staff can look at things and, and write comments and respond back, and we work through and ideas to work cooperatively. So I consider most of the comments to be, you know, fairly routine, I think, you know, but to be frank, I think, to me, kind of like the big deal just jumped out, and remember, we just saw these shortly before the meeting. Uh, I see some of the historical comments, and you know, we're all entitled to our opinions, um, you know, I don't agree with them. Uh, I think that, you know, we are gonna push back on those, and, you know, luckily, you know, this is, to me, these comments are from one staff member, they're not just the comments of the whole historical review board, will be, going, you know, before them in April twenty-fourth, so we know a lot more about that, but, you know, to me, I found, I found those to be surprising. And, um, you know, you know, maybe not like that far apart, but to me, kind of very like not, giving deference to, you know, to, you know, to the architect, to, you know, who's very experienced, to the developer, to other types of things, I mean, they seemed, they felt very particular to me. And so we will be pushing back on those, and we'll see, we will see how that goes. The other, and we, you know, referenced before was State Highway, um, I'm very surprised at, you know, their sort of, you know, request, the time that they're looking at, this project has been, you know, very well publicized, you know, for several years, if they wanted to do a visioning study, uh, that could have been done years ago. Um, they announced this visioning study, you know, it's funny, I, I've not done a project in Montgomery County, uh, not certainly not done a project with State Highway, I asked how many times have they done a visioning study? They never. This is like the first time it's ever been done, they talked about it a few months ago, they haven't even, I think they had one and haven't started, so, you know, I'm kind of upset about that, to be honest, and so, um, you know, it's, it's, it's baffling to me. And I want to, you know, talk to State Highway and understand why, you know, if what they're talking about is so important, why they're taking so long to do it, so, those are the two things that jumped out at me from, you know, from, from the DRC comments.
So, just from my perspective, I'm surprised how fast S H A is moving on this. So, I, I appreciate that perspective, but uh, to me, it seems like they're moving much faster than I anticipated they would. And I, I think it is really important that we do make sure we get the intersection part of this right, because that's where a lot of the safety concerns come in, and we wanna make sure that people are safe and that we have a working intersection for everyone involved. So, I hope you keep that in mind as you're, you're working with them and, and having those conversations. Some of the other things that just sort of jumped out at me at the DRC, in the DRC comments were related to the building height, the lay-by, um, and the setback from the, um, I, I believe it was the Healy Building. There was a, I think there was a comment about needing a further setback from that. Are those things that you'll continue to look at and you'll have discussions with them about, or do you foresee there being ways to address those within the confines of what you have here?
So, uh, since we just received those comments like late Friday, so our consultants are currently studying these comments and then, they will follow up with the different county agencies separately to clarify the comments, to discuss the comments, and then, like, we, we, we will have further, uh, sta- discuss with the comments and then address those.
And then you say here that you're targeting to address comments from the DRC and resubmit plans by April third.
So the April third is a di- is a deadline published in, by Montgomery County. So we, since we know we have, we have some other, like the HPC comments and the traffic issues, we cannot drive by April third. So, but we will, but some other comments, like a technical issues, uh, like clean up the, the markup on the joints, we can do that. So, we will try our best to, to clean up the comments, um, by April third and do our first resubmission.
So we can expect by A- that April third that you won't be delving into some of the more difficult questions from the HPC and, um, and related to the intersection, is that right? And then at what point you'll get into the HPC comments, um, later after you meet with them, later in April? And you're planning on, on discussing with S H A sort of on an ongoing basis?
Yeah, so we, we will firstly discuss with Matt, uh, the, the traffic guy in the county, and then hopefully we can, along with City, we can all schedule a meeting with S H A to discuss this issue.
I think that's all I have for right now, thank you.
Yeah, sorry, before going, I mean, I, I hopefully did not mean to, hopefully no one thinks that safety is not a concern of ours, we studied very carefully, and perhaps I'm just unaware of the pace at which State Highway moves, so, maybe I'll learn, thank you.
Great, and I just, um, I know last week we talked about this, but I did receive a response back from, um, Gwen Wright at the Plane Department, I just wanna emphasize one of the things that Gwen said in her letter, um, where she said, um, you know, I'd like to emphasize that the Plane Department views this project at the beginning of a review process, not at an end. We expect that the project will evolve over the course of the review and plan to work closely with Tacoma Park resident staff and elected officials during the review. So, um, and that was the letter she just sent last week, so again, just to emphasize that this is part of the planning process, and, um, there will be some back and forth, and even the Planning Department sees us at the beginning of this process and not at an end. Um, Councilwoman DeBala.
Yeah, hi, thanks for coming and, and talking to us about this and showing us the, the new set of, of drawings here. I wanna make, I'm not sure if this is a question for you or if this is a question for the City Manager, but I wanna make sure that I understand the process going forward here. So in a regular review, there'd be a date by which the applicant would respond to the comments. And in this case, you have, thought I heard you say that your first stop is county transportation and your second stop is, historic preservation. So maybe I didn't get that right, 'cause this doesn't say that. I guess, I guess the, some of the, some of the comments are, are, are more showstopping than others. And in this case, I'm wondering how you would like, you want to approach the, particularly the lay-by and the intersection, just, um, and what the requirements would be, so, why, I think it might be a question for you, is you, you alluded to saying there might be some response from county planning about how they wanna handle things, given some of, some of the comments. I'm, I'm still, I'm sorry, I'm still not clear on the process.
In my view, in my view, the most important thing is to hear from State Highway. The road is State Highway, how the, how the intersection functions, how the entrances function, how sightlines work, the timing of the various lights, all of that, um, is, it's all on State Highway right away. And so, to me, um, it's, it's not even worth saying, well, this lay-by is too close to a stop bar or something, which is some of the kind of comments that were in there, until we hear from State Highway, which needs to really look at how does the whole thing work together? And how does safety work, and how does, how do bicycles go through, and all of those kinds of things, so, um, so to me, I, you know, I, I recognize that this discussion could be a delay to go through the visioning process, but I'm also looking forward to that visioning process, uh, because they've never done it before, we've asked them for the work for decades. And, um, a- and as you mentioned, um, Councilwoman Kostick, they're actually moving pretty fast for State Highway, which is, uh, really something. But frankly, it's, it's not, it's not worth it to look at some of the details until we hear from State Highway. So, from anything that has to do with the road, the lay-by, those kinds of things, really does rely on the State Highway process.
So do you expect State Highway to come back and, I mean, excuse me, do you expect the county planning staff to come back and say something like that, like we're putting this on hold?
They pretty much said that, they said that they were not, so M dot, M C dot, Montgomery County Department of Transportation, my understanding is that they were saying that neither they nor State Highway would weigh in on these plans until the S H A visioning process is complete. And part of the concern, obviously, of N D C is that that could take a while. Um, nevertheless, I think that's, it's frankly, I mean, we, you have to hear from State Highway. And I look forward to that, I think that's the right way to proceed.
Okay. That's it for the moment. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, I appreciate you guys coming out this evening. Uh, a, a few questions. Have you guys decided how you're going to combine the ownership of, I guess it's the Healy property with the Tacoma Park site, how that, is it gonna be a combo?
Are you referring to the Auto Clinic?
Yes, Auto Clinic, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Auto Clinic. Have you guys decided in what direction you wanna go?
We have two or three options, and we're working together with the city to see what option works best for them and,
Right, that's a, that's a negotiation item that will be coming to you.
Okay, so you guys haven't, you don't, do you have a preference?
Do we have a preference? Um, no, not really, it's, it's like any sort of, sort of legal business arrangement, there are pros and cons for either side, and so, and again, it's a matter of working with, you know, you are partners to see what works best for both sides.
Okay, now, some months ago, my colleague, Mr. Kovar, uh, suggested pushing the front of the building back so many feet so that you could have, um, a larger, uh, public space. And in your words, you know, I'm paraphrasing that you didn't think it was feasible. But now we have this new plan that, you know, nineteen thousand square feet, uh, has been chopped off. How is it now that this plan is feasible when my colleague's proposal wasn't?
Um, I'm not sure, I don't know, you probably have me on record, so maybe, I don't know if I use the word feasible or not, I mean, the word I would really use is desirable, I mean, we worked with some of the best architects and civic designers in combining our own knowledge, and we really felt that the, there was a, a balance needed to be between the, you know, the amount of public space in front, the street frontage of the buildings, how deep the, the project should go, how it interact, how it looks. And we felt strongly, and still feel very strongly, that the front part of the building, facade, you know, simply how it, how it relates to the street, how it relates to the patches by, provides the project with the most vibrancy, the most chance of commercial success, uh, the best aesthetic, um, we, you know, I, I know we've spent many, a lot of time, City Manager talking about that. I know, you know, as you alluded to, me and Councilmember Kovar had many spirited discussions about that, and we ultimately came down that the way the front of the building is designed gives the project the best chance of being a commercial success, an aesthetic success, a, uh, urban design success. And we feel, feel strongly that that's, that's the case.
With the parking rates, last time we discussed that, you guys hadn't come up with a rate, have you decided what the parking rate would be?
No, we haven't.
And has the internal rate returned, what you guys are going to hopefully give for investors because the size of this project has changed, has that changed, or?
Has it changed?
Yes.
Uh, yes, I think the project is, would have been more profitable if it was bigger, to be honest. But I still think it is sufficiently profitable that we're happy with it and it will attract necessary capital. And, you know, most importantly to you, I mean, you all want it to be successful, you know, and so, um, we still are very excited about it, both from a commercials prospect, as well as, you know, as a place making and a contribution to society, so we're, we're still very happy with the project.
Alright, thank you.
Councilmember Kovar?
Thank you, thanks for coming, appreciate it. We did have some good conversations previously, um, a few questions I wanted to ask you, so, um, and Councilmember Smith mentioned, mentioned the facade, I thought it looked like the Historic Preservation Commission's comments were talking about having the facade come out even fur- closer to the street, did you all read it that way?
I'm sorry to interrupt, those were one staff member's comments, they were not the whole Commission's.
But what, what was presented for the DRC, right, was that, did that indicate that it should come further, closer to the street as you read that?
I read, I read the comments the opposite. Uh, but, because, and that was, that's an area that is a real issue, because historic commercial areas are close to the sidewalk, they're not setback. Uh, you don't have historic commercial strips, you know, the strips all along Carroll Avenue are, are up close to the sidewalk.
Okay, but so it says pedestrian orientation of shop fronts with entryways and display windows immediately adjacent to the sidewalk. I guess the question is, do they want that changed to that, or do they want that changed from that?
We can't speak to that, I think that's the reason that they have to go talk to the, to the staff person.
Okay, so, um, on the overlapping lots which, which Mr. Smith mentioned, um, and I don't know, again, who should answer that, but is there a rough idea for what the timing would be on when? I mean, I, I think there's a little more time now because of what S H A has said, right, that we don't have to,
That's right, a, a dec- a decision has to be done by the time we go to permit, uh, so that's a ways away. Um, nevertheless, it is something that lawyers are talking about.
I'm sorry, that, that's a what away?
It's a long time away.
Oh, a long time, yeah, okay, right, right, okay. So, can you talk a, a little bit about the, the green roof, because, um, some people have asked about, there, I guess there are three separate components of the green roof now, two are real roofie and one is, at ground level, but still, it's the roof on top of the, on top of the, um, the parking, right, but so together, the three of them, how much, uh, so first of all, some, uh, green space is lost from the construction, right, and so, do these three sections, would they be projected to be able to manage the same amount of, of, uh, stormwater that current, currently can flow off of the parking lot, or more, or how, how do, how do those three add up on that point? If that question makes sense?
Yeah, either way, add more, so, we, the city, uh, also, staff also made a calculation with the, the, with the stone, the cap- capacity of our storm water management exists twenty-seven percent of the requirement. So we, yeah, we definitely have the ability to,
Over the requirements for the size of the proposed building, not, not for, not over the, over the parking lot? Now, am I?
It's the, it's what, it's the area that's disturbed, which the gr- the parking lot is part of what's disturbed. So, if you take the bottom footprint, the parking garage is larger than,
So it's more than just the, the parking lot space, right, that, that the twenty-seven percent is off of? So, you have an area that's disturbed, which is bigger than the parking lot, and when you say this would include,
No, I'm sorry, and I don't know if I should be speaking here. The, the issue about what needs to be accommodated by stormwater has to do with what gets disturbed on the site. And there's a building and there's a, up, the garage underneath is larger than the footprint of the main and the second floors. Um, my understanding is that the green roof is at least as big, or maybe a little bit bigger than, than was previously accommodated on the, on the top roof. There is a commitment and, and a requirement by the council that the accommodation of stormwater be at a higher level than, than the city would normally require.
All right. I, I don't wanna get into.
Well, I, I, can I just also say, these were questions that we asked on our, not last Friday's call, but the call beforehand. So, there's more detail on the city website that was provided by Jing Jing as well as.
There's still a few outstanding questions for me, so I'll submit those.
Yeah, and we are continuing our weekly call, so.
And the one additional question, and we can answer this later, is that the descriptions I've seen have indicated that the, that the water all comes down Carroll and Sycamore and Columbia. Others have told me that some.
Our Director of Public Works is actually preparing, as the city manager sent us an email all about that yesterday. Our Director of Public Works is preparing more detailed information regarding stormwater. And given the complexity of it and the engineering expertise needed, I'd ask that we wait for, and she's not here tonight, for that information.
So, for, for N D C, so with the staff questions, which include, well, number one, the request by S H A to delay, so there's a little more time for all this stuff than we all thought. And I understand your frustration with that. On the other hand, Councilmember McCaustic's point that that's actually quick for them. But it seems like there's a lot more time than we thought we had. Again, understanding that those are individual staff people who've presented those points, it does seem as if there, there are a couple of really big, uh, potential changes, which includes some of the things that the Historic Preservation Commission representative submitted, and then, uh, Montgomery County, um, Transportation on the layby. So, if those things remain more or less as they are, as they've been suggested by those individuals, I mean, does that lead you to think that you would have to make some more significant changes to the, to the design?
Well, I mean, as Ching Ching said, we just saw these comments, and as the mayor said, it's just beginning the process. So, I mean, you know, if every single thing on here was inflexible and had to do, I haven't analyzed them all, I mean, you know, that wouldn't be, that'd be tough. I mean, would it be a showstopper and Councilmember DeBala, I don't know if it shows up, but I'm expected to be. I expect this to be iterative process where the county and the city puts forth the things they want, where we as developers, um, you know, push back with the things that we think will make a successful project, where professional, our professional consultants find creative ways to bridge gaps and to satisfy things. So, I consider this a normal part of the give and take that we do as a private developer with the public body and that I fully expect it to, you know, be worked out, and I fully expect that this project will be built.
Okay, just a couple more things. So, on parking, um, I don't personally know what the correct amount of parking is, and I think that will be one of the things that will be, that will be decided. I don't think we knew about the, the sharing of those parking spaces. So, I thought it was seventy-nine spaces. I mean, I understood that some of the seventy-nine might be for smaller vehicles or, or whatever, but it seems a little bit late in the process now for us to hear that it's a few, that's a smaller number. I don't know if there's anything you wanna say about that.
So, if, if I may just.
Well, I'd like, I'd like to know what everyone has to say.
Well, I mean, you know, as, I don't know, I hate to repeat myself, but I mean, I think that as we, you know, go through this process, we refine things and that, you know, we, you know, if the standard's gonna be, nothing ever changes, and if I say something, like if it's seventy-four spaces, you know, this week and it's seventy-two six months from now, it's not because I'm hiding the ball. It's because thing, we find out things, they evolve, and that's just a normal part of the process. And, you know, it might be more, you know, a, a week from now, it might be less. But I mean, essentially, it's the same project that it has been for the four or five years.
Well, it's just, it's sharing earlier in the process and communicating more regularly is what would be beneficial. To me, I, you know, when I look at the new project, and I don't know what other people in the community think, you said it, and I think it's true. It's pretty much the same as the other project because it takes, it takes the extra space off the back. So, when you go along the front, it essentially looks the same. I think your figures showed that. So, for me, and, and given my concern about the lack of sufficient public space at the front, at the ground level, that hasn't been addressed. So, to me, that remains unaddressed. We'll see how the rest of it proceeds as, as we go along. Thank you.
Could I speak just for a moment about parking? One of the things that, uh, you know, when this project first started, it wasn't as big of a project. You didn't have the auto clinic, so the number of parking spaces was much smaller. There was a lot of debate at the beginning of this project by the council about how much parking should be accommodated and what's the purpose of the parking. You did come to some decisions on that in your, in state, general statements in your resolution. For projects such as this, uh, one of the things that is hard, but is also a good thing, is that because it is something that goes through this site plan review process, it's an iterative process going back and forth, it also allows you to ha- consider the balance. At what point is this enough parking and is this enough stormwater and is this enough whatever? And so, the numbers are likely to change as you're considering the pros and cons of some of these different things. It's, it's good to continue to have the back and forth and understanding about how that works. But it's also one of the advantages of the site plan review process, that you get to use your judgment ultimately about which things you want more of and which things you want less of and how does it all work together. And so, um, I just wanted to, to share that, that that is, that is the good thing of going through all of these different meetings and things, to be able to weigh those, the pros and cons of the number of spaces and the kinds of spaces.
And that, and I have no objection to that, and I agree that that's true. I would say if the answer is of the seventy-nine, X number actually shared, and so there's fewer of them, and that's been true before and that's been true now, that should be shared, shared with us at the beginning. That's what I'm saying.
Well, I mean, I think we're sharing now, and we are committed to transparency. Uh, we have weekly updates. We have weekly meetings. Uh, I can assure you, this has been, uh, the, of the over a dozen project working on. We have more transparency, more communication on this one project than I'd say the other twelve all put together. So, we are trying, we understand that sometimes, and I've had conversations, councilmembers feel that, you know, we don't tell you soon enough. We are telling, you know, unless you wanna assign a staff member to our office and be there every day, we are communicating as fast as we can, but we'll try to do better.
And just, just a, a clarification again on the county development review process. So, some of these comments from the different staff people are written as you must do this, you must do that, and some of them are written as, well, here's an issue. And so, for me, reading them, it's hard for me to say which are absolute and which are, are to be discussed. And so, I, I just wanna get, um, either Adrian's or Jing Jing's response to that.
Yeah, so currently, those are just comments. So, we were, like, the, one of the comments, I can use a, as an example, like, uh, I remember is from the county, the Mary Jo from the county, like, said, uh, this is a he- historic, this side is in the historic side, uh, histor- historic district, and this side is a historic side, so we must provide, uh, some tree even, uh, inventory, something. But then later on, when we discuss this, uh, with county staff, then we find out this side is, it, it did in the di- di- historic district, but it's not the historic side. So, we do not need to provide those. So, those are like, uh, back and forth discussion with the, uh, county. So, so, yeah, each, I, our, each, uh, consultants will follow up with them separately to try those.
Yes.
So, you fully expect back and forth on these comments?
Yeah, yeah.
And is it when the report, when they do their final report, that's when the final decision will be made on these things, correct?
Well, actually, I think, you know, this is, this is still staff.
Right, and then it goes to the planning board.
So, so there's, there's a couple distinctions. Sometimes county staff will make a comment that says the code requires X. That's not a discussion point. They'll say the code requires X, and so that may be in their list, and, and it has to be adhered to. Uh, other things will be statements, and then that, um, goes to a decision body, whether it's Historic Preservation Commission or the Planning Board, and obviously you will weigh in on, on those as well. But that's part of the discussion is, and, and determination and working through these, identifying which of the things are comments that are requirements because of their code provisions or that kind of thing versus the staff's best recommendation, and then that gets a judgment call by the Planning Board.
Councilwoman DeBala, did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your presentation tonight and for the update. Appreciate that. I, just one question, and that regards the, uh, space that you've envisioned for the restaurant. I just wonder how that compares to what had been envisioned before and, and if you're comfortable that we can still attract a, a decent restaurant for that size?
It's, it's about the same, and I'm very confident we are going to attract an outstanding restaurant that everyone in the city will love.
Good luck on that one. So, maybe a Taco Bell or something?
Please don't say that.
I'm sorry. But I noticed that it doesn't have that, uh, separate little area you had envisioned as a, as a kitchen area. It still has sufficient room for a kitchen?
Yes, no, we, we're very comfortable with it, yes.
All right, thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Circe?
Thank you so much for, for coming out tonight. Um, I remember, what was it, last, last year, last fall? Um, that we.
It's all a blur.
It's all a blur. And we said, this is gonna be an iterative process, that it is not a sprint, it is a marathon. And the prior presenter said, you know, the county is a bit of a chicken and egg kinda thing. Some things it would make sense to do before, others they want you to do it the other way. So, I think that this is just the first example of, uh, the, the wacky process that is, um, planning. So, I appreciate you all's willingness to, um, engage with us more, present more, share with you know, and, and even after getting comments, what, four days ago? Two days ago?
Two days ago.
Coming, coming before us, um, you know, perhaps before you've had an opportunity to fully digest and, and really think through next steps for all of the comments received. I do have one question about the, the, the trash, I guess that little triangle, if we were to go, I'm sorry, that little rectangle, if we go back. I know that one of the points that was raised previously, um, was the notion of making sure that there would be enough space for the through trash and removal. So, and I think this might have been mentioned before, and I apologize, it's nine thirty. So, is that space actually the same as the prior plan in terms of? The full layout?
Yes.
Okay, so that space is the same? Okay.
Councilwoman McCaustic?
I, I forgot to ask. Um, I think you said this before, but I just wanted to, to verify. The rear space, that corridor, is not intended to be an outdoor sitting space or a gathering space. Is that right? That, that is a space for removing trash, for deliveries, that sort of thing?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Great. All right, well, it's nine thirty. Um, thank you very much, uh, for coming this evening. And I, I do wanna say, I very much appreciate the Friday calls. I think the interaction, even as we've seen tonight, the more clarification on certain things, um, there are a lot of pieces to this project. And so, I very much appreciate the ability to go back and forth and ask clarifying questions and to have the ability to do that each week. Um, I very much appreciate that.
One last thing? I forgot to mention this before. Um, on, on the S H A visioning, I'm sorry, I forgot to mention this. We're all happy that they're doing that, and if it's never been done before, it's 'cause we really want it and we're special here. So, I don't know, I don't, I don't know why it should take that long to set it up, but I think it's a, it's a positive thing, I think, from, from my perspective. So, I, I just, I meant to say that before. You don't have to respond to that.
I, I will, we will try to take it in that positive vein.
Uh, on the visioning process, um, they certainly had, um, put out some information encouraging people to apply to be on the stakeholders, well, not stakeholders, the kind of group that oversees the outreach process. My, I was contacted today by the project manager, um, asking for a little bit of space in the upcoming newsletter to, um, have a, um, link to a survey that they want people to respond on. So, they do seem to be moving along. That's the best I can say now, but at least they, they continuing to, um, engage with us. So, it seems like it's moving.
Great.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Talking on Friday. All right, now we will move on to public comments on our voting items. Our first voting item is the first reading ordinance prohibiting the commercial use of plastic beverage straws and stirs. Do I have any public comments on that? Oh, Lori. Yeah. Do you guys just share? Did you just, like, share crutches? Oh. Oh, yeah, let me do that.
Press the button. Okay. Hi, my name is Marty Itner, and I live in Ward Five. I urge the council to vote in favor of the, this ordinance, which will phase out plastic straws and stir, stirs. Although straws are a small part of the enormous amount of plastic that is produced, it represents a fundamental statement and action that we can take in Tacoma Park. When I was serving on the Committee on the Environment, the issue of a straw ban came up. With all the other heavy agenda items, from climate change to water quality to our tree canopy, there was not much enthusiasm for taking on straws. Then at one meeting, I was surprised to see three boys sitting together at the end of the table. These elementary students had come prepared with a petition and a purpose to phase out plastic straws. There was the enthusiasm. We also had Lori Hill, who has the experience and energy to lead our group, The Last Plastic Straw Tacoma Park. Our group was organized to help restaurants and educate the public, to join the momentum to phase out single, single-use plastic straws. Plastic pollution is a catastrophe. Phasing out plastic straws may seem like a small thing, but small things add up. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Lori Hill, and, uh, I'm from Ward Two, and I'm a member of The Last Plastic Straw Tacoma Park. If the proposed single-use plastic straw ban passes, it will be essential for the city to provide education and outreach and proper enforcement, or this effort will be fruitless. One of the city council's priorities is to explore alternative approaches to enhance public engagement and two-way communication. And I think that's great because, um, despite almost daily headlines reporting how single-use plastic is wreaking havoc on our planet, it's still not on everybody's radar. Social media notices on listservs and even articles in the monthly City of Tacoma Park newsletter will only do so much. We need to really get out there, not just to the restaurants, but among our citizens to ensure they really understand why single-use plastics are bad for our health and the health of our planet and what the alternatives are. Other forms of outreach could include having an engaging information table at city events, concise notices on the front page of the monthly newsletter, or, or, as well as outreach to civic and social groups who will give us a platform for five minutes to talk about this initiative. Expecting our citizens to come to us to learn more is not the answer. We need to go to them. Now, while I know that some of the members of The Last Plastic Straw Tacoma Park will soon be moving on to other projects, I can personally offer my assistance to work with the city on education and outreach. We have the materials to educate the restaurants and the general public, and that includes plenty of paper straws. When it comes to enforcement, if passed, we need to make this ban easy to enforce. We can't expect the Neighborhood Services Division to do it all, so we need help from citizens who spot a violation. Just a few hours ago, I looked at the city's website to see if it indicates how to report a violator of one of its initiatives. While the pesticides ban, also known as Safe Grow, does indicate how to report a violator, it is buried at the very bottom of the page. And there is nothing under the information about the plastic bag ban and the polystyrene ban that tells someone where to go to report a violator. I've personally reported two polystyrene violations, but the only way I knew who to call was because of my involvement with the city's Adopt a Spot program. We need to make it easy for the average citizen to report a violator. At the very least, I urge you to require that all of our city's initiatives have a link at the top of their, at the top of their information page where someone can report a violation. The District of Columbia has a dedicated page where citizens can report violations of their various food service bans without leaving their name. I'm happy to share that link with you, and I hope you will adopt something similar. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this?
Hi, Nadine, Block Ward Three, and I'm going to just echo what Lori said, as someone who was instrumental in helping pass the polystyrene legislation that we now see moving to the state level. I'm glad that Tacoma Park is picking up the straw ban that the Young Activist Club started, like, six years ago, so I'd like you to pass it. However, I do think the polystyrene ban, the pesticide ban, and all the other good things that we do are really undercut because there's no enforcement, and there are, it's very difficult to figure out how to make sure that people follow through. So, uh, I know that there are students still out there that would probably maintain a website, that would have alternative materials and other things, and probably redo the little bookmarks that we had for the polystyrene ban when, when it was going, maybe something like that would be really important. So, I do think without that backup that Lori really eloquently, uh, said, um, it really doesn't have that much effect. So, please do pass it, but pass it with some teeth and some real good information of where people can report folks, and alternatives that people can use, and how it can actually move into the realm of having meaningful impact. Thank you.
Great. Any other public comments on this?
Hi, I'm Eve Jenkins from Ward One, um, and I also work at a local restaurant, so I wanted to speak a little bit also on, uh, in support of the plastic straw ban, um, and maybe also give a little bit of an encouraging, on-the-ground kind of report. Um, it's my experience that, um, in the last year or so, that demand for plastic straws has just gone down, you know, tanked completely among the, um, customers in Tacoma Park. I would say about a year ago, um, probably eighty percent of the people, when offered a straw, would accept one, and now it could be, like, twenty percent. I mean, public awareness of this has just, um, changed tremendously through the publicity around plastic straws nationwide, not, I think, not just in Tacoma Park. Um, so that's great, and we've already, um, transitioned over to paper straws in our restaurant, um, and my experience is that the customers are really, really happy with that. They, uh, the people who do accept a straw are excited that they can have one without feeling guilty about it. And, um, the only other real response that I see is just a little bit of confusion, like, somebody kind of, oh, this looks kind of odd, why is it a funny color, you know, doesn't have a wrapper, whatever. But, um, I cannot think of any complaint that I have ever received. So, um, as far as that goes, also, in terms of cost, because the demand for straws has gone down so much, even though, um, per unit, the paper straws are more expensive, um, I would guess we are still spending less for straws than we were last year. So, I don't, I'm not seeing it being like a, you know, a deal breaker for a small business. Uh, so the, my only other point, I guess, would just be that I hope this isn't the end of the game. It doesn't sound like it is for people, but plastic straws are just one of the many little dinky little plastic things that we give out. Um, if you think about, um, creamer packages, butter, jam, syrup, all those things come in little plastic packages frequently. Um, there are alternatives to how you can do that, but many restaurants do it that way. Um, little plastic cups that you put condiments and sauces in, um, plastic to-go cups, all of those things, um, you know, from every table. I'm a waitress. I'm throwing away a little handful of little plastic gizmos that are not recyclable. So, um, just, I hope that we keep moving on this and keep thinking about more and more of the products that we use regularly. Thank you.
Any other public comments on this?
Yeah, Janice Totten, Ward Three. Just want to say Roscoe's changed to paper straws, uh, last year, about a year, year now, they, they did that. Um, when I went to Montana in 2016, the whole of the, um, Glacier National Park, the West, had, had, there were no plastic straws, they were all biodegradable. There are straws made from bamboo and all sorts of other things, as well as paper. But I, I don't want to encourage paper straws, because I was using paper, unless it's recycled paper, but there are very good alternatives now, so I'd like to see advertisement of that and going that way. Uh, Tacoma Park leading in the storefront. Thank you.
Any other public comments? All right, now moving on to our next voting item, it's a resolution regarding accessory dwelling units and ZTA nineteen dash zero one. Any public comments on that?
Good evening, my name is Eric Salt, I'm a local architect in Tacoma Park. Uh, together with my professional colleague, William Kerwin, AIA, and former chair of the Montgomery County Historic Preservation Commission, who sends his regards for not being able to make it tonight, we offer the following testimony in support of Hans Reamer's proposed zoning amendment to relax the regulations governing ADUs. As architects, we've had many clients in Tacoma Park, as well as other neighborhoods in the county, that have abandoned plans to build an ADU in their homes or on their properties, because either they reside in homes where they are prohibited, or have found the process to be a costly, time-consuming burden. ZTA nineteen oh one, as proposed by Councilmember Reamer, offers significant improvements to the regulations governing ADUs to allow their creation to be more fairly available to more county residents, and will help relieve some of the burdensome restrictions. ADUs, as part of a broader plan to increase affordable housing options in the county, present great benefits to Tacoma Park and other county communities. They can provide for aging in place, with dignity for parents and loved ones who want to remain in their homes with their family. They can provide for independent living for disabled family members who still require support from parents or relatives. They can provide additional income to residents who want to move into or remain in their communities, but are being priced out by increasing real estate values. They can allow our artists, college students, police, and teachers to reside within the community they work, uh, study, and serve. While ADUs provide benefits to all communities, my colleague, William Kerwin, notes that they can especially be beneficial in historic districts like the one here in Tacoma Park. Although there are tax credits to help pay for maintenance and renovation of historic properties, the high costs of such projects still make them unattainable for many owners. By creating ADUs at historic properties, owners can generate additional income to help defray these significant costs. In fact, the creation of ADUs is a recognized historic preservation strategy for the adaptive reuse of a historic property to help provide for its maintenance and protection. Tacoma Park prides itself on being a leading progressive community. Allowing for the creation of more ADUs is part of a progressive policy that is already taking place in Portland, Seattle, Los Angeles, Minneapolis, and many other cities. For every new housing unit we can create near major transit, we eliminate the need to build a new unit on undeveloped land further out. I project that Tacoma Park could add probably between eighty to a hundred new ADUs under this new policy. This is equal to a new apartment building, something which has not been built in Tacoma Park in a long time, and most likely won't be for years to come. Because it is a private sector-led housing strategy, it has the potential to create tax revenue for the city versus a government-funded low-income housing project.
Thank you, Mr. Salt.
I had a, I, I talked about getting another minute.
No, sorry, it's three minutes.
Okay.
Oh, actually, you did, I'm sorry, you did ask me. I'm-
Yeah, yeah. I just had, like, another minute.
No, you did, and I said yes, and I'm-
Okay.
-in my mind. I will give you another minute. I'm sorry, you did.
It's okay. On a personal note, when I was growing up, my Aunt Lori lived in a detached ADU, likely a garage conversion. This was in Laguna Beach, California, one of the most expensive places to live in the country. Like Tacoma Park, Laguna Beach is known for its big artist community, where local artists make a living selling their work at flea markets on the beach, galleries, cafes, and shops throughout the city. For many of these single starving artists, living in Laguna Beach is out of reach. My aunt was fortunate to have found a great little ADU within walking distance from the beach where she sold her work. It had a yard for her dog and was detached from other neighbors, so she didn't have to worry about making too much noise working late hours. The property owners also appreciated having her there to watch the property when they went on vacation, or simply to take care of their dog on short notice. It was a mutually beneficial arrangement that gave my aunt access to a community she loved and contributed to, but that she would have been otherwise unable to afford. I would like this for Tacoma Park. I want to know that a Tacoma Park resident has more housing options than either an expensive single-family home or a more affordable high-rise apartment. The more variety we can provide in terms of housing types, size, location, and price, the more accessible, inclusive, sustainable, and successful our community will be.
Thank you. And sorry, you did ask me, I completely forgot.
Okay.
It's been a really long day. Thank you, Mr. Salt. All right, any other, uh, comments on the resolution regarding the accessory dwelling units and ZTA nineteen dash oh one?
Hi, I'm Lorraine Purcell, seven, seven oh eight Tacoma Avenue, and I just want to, um, something I thought about, you know, with, um, with climate change and all the water we're getting, stormwater runoff, and the one thing I thought of with respect to this particular issue, which I think is, yeah, I think I'm in favor of it, and, uh, ADUs, but, um, creating more impervious surface is a little worrisome, and I don't know if there's a way, you know, particularly if there's parking associated with, um, onsite parking, or does there have to be onsite parking? Uh, or would, could it be mandated that it's a pervious surface, uh, so water can get through? It's just, um, I just, I'm, we're all having water problems, and I just thought, gee, you know, it's a great idea, but, you know, are we creating, you know, covering up more and more soil that would be receiving, you know, this water and drinking it up? So, just something to think about as you do this. I don't know if there's a way to work something in that would improve it in that respect, so, thanks.
Hi, I'm Jessica Landman in Ward One, and I am actually the guinea pig, the very first person to be applying for an accessory dwelling unit under the current new revisions to the zoning rules that were put in place that was round one. Hans Reamer's proposal is round two. I can tell you that the first round did not succeed in eliminating the many, many obstacles to enabling people to take this step. And a key issue is the requirement to have onsite parking under the county's regulations, or to obtain a waiver from parking requirements, which requires a full-blown zoning hearing. I have a massive sign as large as the one that was at the Tacoma Junction in front of my house right now, notifying the community that a waiver has been applied for. And, um, I understand that the City of Tacoma Park has spoken with the county about whether those parking requirements ought to be applicable in a, in a close-in community like this, where many, many people live here because of available public transportation. I would like to support the City of Tacoma Park attempting to obtain an, an opportunity to have a differentiated type of treatment, for example, to allow for ADUs where, for example, somebody like me could write into the lease that the occupant would not have a car. Why not allow that to be a mechanism for waiving the requirement to consider onsite parking and go through a zoning procedure? It ought to be possible to make that type of an adjustment, and Tacoma Park's a perfect place to, um, to put it in place. It's something I'd be happy to put in the lease of a tenant in my own ADU if and when I ever get it, uh, approved, and keep my fingers crossed, I've just had my zoning hearing scheduled for next month. But it is, it is a good idea to move ahead with this and to enable people to make this additional housing available. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comments on this?
Uh, calling Cordis, Ward One. Um, and, uh, I think it's a great idea, the ADUs, and I, I, I think, um, uh, Ms. Landman's, uh, suggestion was a really good one. From experience on the tree commission, I just wanted to pass on that we did have a case in a neighborhood where parking was very tight, where someone wanted to put in, um, you know, a big driveway, uh, which involved wanting to remove trees. So, just to keep that in mind, that, um, that that is something to think about, what this idea of the pervious and impervious, um, materials, and also what, you know, when you think about parking, think about how you can not have a counterproductive effect on trees, too. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this one? All right, seeing none, our last voting item is a resolution providing for appointments to the FASAD Advisory Board. Any public comments on that? All right, seeing none, then we will go to our first voting item, which is the, all right, which is the first reading ordinance prohibiting the commercial use of plastic beverage straws and stirs. Um, and before we move forward on this, I think we want to make sure that, um, uh, we had to fill in on line one eleven, that the ordinance will be effective July first, twenty nineteen, for education, and then July fir-, for, excuse me, January first, twenty twenty, for warnings, and then July first, twenty twenty, for fines. Okay? So, that was-
And that'll be, and that'll show up in, also in the second meeting.
Right, in the second reading.
Yeah.
And I believe that was the only change from, uh, what had been posted, correct?
Yes.
Okay, would someone like to move the ordinance?
I would like to move it.
Councilwoman DeBala, would someone like to second?
Second.
Councilmember Siemens, second. Any other discussion? Councilmember DeBala, did you have?
No, I, I think this, this works pretty well. Um, I, I agree that it, the point is education and communications, it's not to slam people around. And the more time that folks need in some parts of the city to get there, then it's our job to help them.
Great. Thank you. Uh, Councilwoman Circe?
Um, I just want to thank everyone for, um, working through the phase-in approach. Um, I've just heard from Kaylee Gannoud, um, at the Crossroads, that she just, um, the CDA received a grant for twelve hundred dollars to purchase straws to help, um, the businesses, um, in the Crossroads area to, to start phasing in. So, um, it's definitely something that we're all committed to, um, as, you know, but it will be important to not only educate, um, business owners, but also come up with strategies for perhaps both purchasing and things like that, that would help to alleviate any burdens in terms of, um, additional costs, so.
And, and along those lines, I'd like to let, thank the group that has been out talking to businesses, including businesses in the Crossroads, and, uh, doing some advanced education, and I hope that the city can take advantage of the materials that have been already developed by the middle schoolers and the community group.
Great. Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I just, uh, again, wanted to thank everybody who was involved in crafting this and, and encouraging the councils to take this step. I certainly support it. Um, but, you know, every day, I'm just amazed at the, uh, the plastic in our world, and, um, although this is a big step for us, and a big step for Tacoma Park, you know, it's such a tiny step when compared to all the plastic issues. I wonder how we can take a step that would, uh, maybe cut back on some of the packaging that we get from Amazon and organizations like that, a lot of unrecyclable materials coming that way. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Uh, I would, would like to agree with my colleague. Uh, thank, I want to thank everyone that worked on this, it's really important. I would especially like to thank Councilmember DeBala for her leadership on this, and I look forward to working with her and, uh, others on the council with other ordinances that protect our environment. Thank you.
All right, I would just like to say thank you, um, as well, and thank you for the, um, thoughts on the website, um, regarding that, and, um, terrific. All right, so, with all those in favor-
Hold it, there is, there is one, um, there was a clause on, rec, uh, whereas recognizing the difficulties that people with disabilities have, it doesn't seem to have made it into this version. It was in the one that was posted the other day.
Oh, it, yes, I'm, I'm sorry, that, that, that should have been in there, you're right. So, it is that same clause will be added in sec-, in the second reading.
Do you happen to have it, um, in front of you, so you can read it, so people can hear it?
It's posted on the website, right?
It's posted on the website.
Yeah, it is posted.
It's posted on the website.
I can read it right now.
Thank you.
Do you want me to read it?
Moment of panic there.
Do you want me to read it? I have it up right now. It says, whereas the City of Tacoma Park is concerned that any plast- plastic straw restrictions not create unintended obstacles of those with disabilities. I think maybe that should be unintended obstacles to, for those with disabilities, not of those with disabilities.
But that was on, that was online, and so the only change from what was posted online was the effective date. So, all, all right, so then all those in favor of the ordinance, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, and this is a two-reading ordinance, and so it will come back again to us on April third, so, and then it will be official. All right, our next is a resolution regarding accessory dwelling units and ZTA nineteen dash oh one. This is, um, this is just a resolution, so we have one vote on it this evening. I think Councilmember Kovar, you had a amendment you wanted to propose, you wanted to- you wanted to propose. You want to do that before we move it?
It's appropriate to do it now. This is a very small thing, and I only, only suggesting it because I got a few questions about this, and I just think it's a clarifying point, so it's in the whereas clauses, and what people had asked was whether, and Mr. Saul, I'm not sure if he's still here, mentioned this earlier, and, uh, the expansion and greater flexibility in the ADUs can be something that's very important and effective in historic districts. What still remains, though, and this is what I was asked about, was, uh, the review by the county of the design and the construction that applies in historic districts still has to happen, just subject to this new flexibility, and so I was just suggesting, this is a clarification to say, whereas existing requirements that apply to the review of design and construction in designated historic districts would remain in effect under the ZTA. So, this doesn't, this isn't what we're resolving and asking for, and it's not overturning anything that's in this ADA. It's just clarifying that if you're allowed to have a, an ADU under this, uh, new county proposal, you would still have to go through, just in terms of the physical appearance and so on, of your, of your ADU through the county historic process. That's my understanding of what is in fact, would in fact be the case under this, and it's just a statement in a whereas clause to, to clarify that.
All right, would someone like to move this, um, resolution with that additional whereas clause? Councilwoman?
Second.
All right, Councilwoman DeBala moved it. Councilmember Smith seconded it. Any discussion before Councilwoman Kostick?
Yeah, um, I just wanted to note that at the Transportation Planning Board meeting today, we had a presentation, um, regarding housing and land use. We, um, heard from the COG planning directors and, um, housing directors, um, group that is looking at housing throughout the region and, um, considering ways to, first of all, address the shortage of housing and the shortfall of housing, um, that is anticipated to be about, um, a hundred and fifteen thousand, um, long-term, a hundred and fifteen thousand housing units that will be needed in the region in order to meet the growing need for jobs and, and families and individuals in the region. And, um, second of all, looking at addressing that in a way that encourages putting that housing near transit and, um, major bus lines, major metro stations, Purple Line stations, all of those things, and to me, the, this ADU, um, this ADU, ZTA, would address many of those things and would help to address the housing shortage, would help to bring that housing closer to, um, ma- mass transit, and would also address many of the affordability concerns. So, I'm excited that, um, we're voting on this tonight and that the county council is considering this.
Thank you. Councilmember Kovar?
Yeah, one, one other thing separate from what I talked about before, and this is actually in follow-up to the comments from Ms. Pierceall and, and Ms. Landman and Ms. Cordis, all of whom are talking about different aspects of, uh, the, the connect to parking and driveways and so on. And what the language in this resolution says is that we would like municipalities, which include Tacoma Park, to be able to chart our own course on parking so that it wouldn't be X number of spaces must be, um, provided. If we have the ability to set it for ourselves, that could give us greater flexibility so that, for example, I'm, I don't know that it would be this, but we could say, if it's a street where parking's only allowed on one side, maybe that would be different from a place where parking's on both sides, or maybe if you're on a state highway and you don't, or you don't have a driveway. So, it wouldn't even have to be that every single parking situation would be the same within the city if that were approved. So, I think all of the issues that were mentioned by, by the three, uh, loyal Ward oneers that, that I just mentioned could be covered in a more sensitive way if, if our proposal to give municipalities the control over that does end up getting adopted by the county. So, um, I think we're moving in that direction. Thank you.
If, if I could elaborate on that, the, um, the normal process is that municipalities can make something stricter. What we're asking the, in this, um, resolution to the county council is that municipalities be able to allow this, the parking requirements to be less strict. Um, and so, for those times when it makes, it makes sense to not care, you know, build an expanded driveway, taking down trees and adding impervious surface to an area that, and there's space for that, that we can handle it in a, in a, in an appropriate way for Tacoma Park. So, I think this allows a lot of flexibility. I don't consider it, um, an overly burdensome staff process, so I did give some th- thought to that, but the, but the distinction here is that we're asking for a less stringent role on parking than the county otherwise provides.
Thank you. Councilwoman DeBala?
Yeah, I was, I was gonna bring up the, the request for the parking, um, local parking adjustments. I don't consider them to be more or less strict. I consider them to be more appropriate for down county, and I think I'd like to put it that way. Um, what's proposed for the county in general is just not gonna work here, as we've heard. Um, I, I also would like to sit to, I, I hope this passes, and if it doesn't, I'd like to see if we can request an overlay just for Tacoma to do this. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Um, and I just want to say, um, thank you first to, uh, the city staff and Patty Mallon for putting together all the information and putting together, um, a great informational meeting a couple of weeks ago for everyone in the community. Um, many people are familiar with ADU accessory dwelling units, but some people are not, and so I think it was helpful to have that information. Um, in addition, um, I will just say that, um, I thank, uh, another resident, um, who lives in Tacoma Park, who actually introduced me to Cole Peterson, who wrote the book Backdoor Revolution when he was here on a book tour, and it was very enlightening to hear from him and the, uh, benefits that ADUs, uh, can bring. And then finally, I want to say, as we're, last week, we passed our, um, resolution declaring a climate emergency, and when I was at the Mayor's Innovation Project this year, there were a number of panels on transportation and climate change, and almost every single one of those panels brought up ADUs as well, as one of the tools to have, um, to really think about, um, not just affordable housing, which it will help us with, but also really thinking about tackling climate change. So, I'm really excited that we're about to take this step, um, this evening, um, and so I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor of the resolution supporting Montgomery County zoning text amendment nineteen dash oh one regarding accessory dwelling units, please say aye. Aye. Any- We passed it with the amendment, so, in it. So, that's why I asked you to do it first, so we pa-, yeah, okay. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, it passes. Thank you very much. I would like to ask, um, Councilmember Kovar, who will be going to the Maryland Municipal League Montgomery Chapter meeting tomorrow night, to bring copies of this so that, um, fellow municipalities will know we passed this, and I'd ask the city staff to please send it to, uh, the county council and county executive tomorrow as well. Thank you. All right, moving on, our last item is a resolution providing for appointments to the facade advisory board. We had a short work session on this last week. Would someone like to pass this resol-, uh, move this resolution providing for appointments to the facade advisory board? Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second? Councilwoman Kostick, second. Any conversation or discussion? All those in favor of the resolution, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, the resolution passes, and now, um, we will move on to any public, other public comments on other issues this evening. Please come to the podium.
Good evening. Jacqueline Moore, Ward two. We're expected to get one to two inches of hard rain over the next twenty-four hours. Will your basement stay dry? These comments are made in rebuttal to points made by Tacoma Park City Manager Suzanne Ludlow. Number one, the overall authority governing stormwater is not the state of Maryland. The state has a guidance document for communities to use. The city of Tacoma Park has the ability to strengthen these requirements as the city meets the state of Maryland policy goal of managing the stormwater by the maximum extent practicable. Number two, there is twenty-seven percent more impervious surface area at the Tacoma Junction development site if the current NDC plan is put in place. There is no evidence that twenty-five, twenty-seven percent more of the stormwater load will be captured. Number three, the volume of stormwater will not be reduced at this site. If the NDC pla-, NDC plan is built out in its current form, the stormwater will be diverted to Prince George's County. It is, number four, it is still unclear why the city of Tacoma Park approved the NDC concept plan because the information from NDC is incomplete and is woefully inadequate. Number five, our city engineer, Ali Khalilian, has recognized the importance of conducting a geotechnical study. It would be an act of extreme hubers for the mayor, city manager, and council to assume that no one out, no outside experts and expertise are needed to ensure that NDC's Tacoma Junction plan is the best plan. You are allowed to admit that many of your decisions regarding the junction have been made based in, on, I'm sorry, made based on incorrect information. Admit it, move forward, demand a better plan and a better deal. Listen to experts and work for, not against, the citizens of Tacoma Park. And to end with a joke, lighten the mood. This is a scenario that supposedly happened in nineteen ninety-three, but it is a bit apocryphal. United States ship, please divert your course zero point five degrees to the south to avoid a collision. Canadian Navy radio man in Newfoundland replies, recommend you divert your course fifteen degrees to the south to avoid a collision. U.S. ship, this is the captain of a U.S. Navy ship. I say again, divert your course. Canadian radio ma-, radio man reply, no, I say again, you divert your course. U.S. ship, this is the aircraft carrier USS Coral Sea. We are a large warship of the U.S. Navy. Divert your course now. Canadian radio man replies, this is a lighthouse. Your call. Consider climate change, traffic concerns, racial equity, stormwater, and all the other issues brought to you by the community vision for Tacoma Park to be the lighthouse. Will you divert your course or run us all aground?
Good evening. I'm Anna Olson from Ward three. Uh, I represent a growing number of very concerned residents of the area surrounding the Park Ritchie apartment building at seventy-six hundred Maple Avenue, and the reason is that we recently learned that no fewer than forty-five cell antennas are mounted on top of that building emitting a very large amount of radio frequency or RF radiation around the clock into the surrounding areas. This effectively makes it a very large and very powerful cellular base station, a cell tower. It's our understanding that Montgomery County has approved permit applications for all of these antennas over the last twenty-two years, but that there is no mechanism in place to evaluate the aggregate RF emissions to ensure that they are within the FCC safety standards and not harmful to human health. The fact of the matter is that numerous scientific studies, including, um, by the World Health Organization, have concluded that living within a quarter of a mile of a cell tower, because of the intense concentration of radiation coming from the multiple antennas, remember forty-five, um, is harmful to human health. One study concluded that individuals living within this risk zone of a quarter of a mile are three times as likely to develop cancer as individuals living further away. And also keep in mind, uh, this kind of radiation and at the levels we are looking at here is especially harmful to children. So, we in this room are currently at point one eight miles from the Park Ritchie cell tower. I'm just gonna call it that. Hence, within that quarter-mile high-risk zone, so are three schools, both of the elementary schools and the middle school, our community center, a daycare center, two public parks, a library, several Tacoma Park government offices, many one-family homes, and multiple large apartment buildings, which, as it happens, also have several cell antennas on top of them, not as many as Park Ritchie, but still. So, I, along with a number, um, a number of my neighbors, sent you, as you, you might, might have seen, a letter earlier today. Um, and I just want to reiterate our main point of that letter, to urge the city of Tacoma Park to take action and to commission a thorough environmental assessment of the aggregate RF radiation being emitted within the quarter-mile radius of Park Ritchie, and to review the history of the permitting process through the years to ensure that there were no oversights, no mistakes made on the applications, the permit recommendations, and the installations. Thank you.
Good evening. Michelle Bailey, Sherman Avenue. I'm stringing my notes together, so I'm gonna try to make this work. Um, I'm gonna follow up with what Anna just said and just talk a little bit more about, um, how, where, you know, how we, where we are now. Um, it's been only two and a half weeks since the industry wires, wireless streamlining bills that would preempt local authority over permits and regulations on cell towers were tabled for interim study. That was HB six-five-four and ten-twenty before the Maryland Economic Affairs Committee. Thanks to residents' quick, uh, response to oppose. As you know, several, uh, you know, residents from Tacoma Park went to Annapolis to testify. Well, while telecoms don't get everything they want right now, and we know they will keep trying, for now, that means, you know, they are working with the private tall buildings that are basically all around us right now. Um, and for years, and as Anna just said, twenty-two years, I believe, um, you know, they've been free to check boxes to answer questions like, will the antenna installation be in compliance with the maximum permissible RF exposure limit set at blah, blah, blah? FCC rules and regulations, check, yes. And type of compliance study required under section one thirteen oh seven of the FCC rules and regulations, check categorically excluded. So, now we have all of these carriers with all of these antennas on the taller privately-owned buildings here in Tacoma Park where they, you know, know people really aren't looking until now. When we looked, we were alarmed at what we found, and as we're finding, these applications are moving quickly at the tower committee. That's why we wanted to get this to you as soon as possible. We, you know, we, we got it to you, but we're also very interested in working with, um, the Park Ritchie residents on this issue. We've been in touch with folks in some of the surrounding apartments, the condos, par- parents, um, coming out of the elementary school. We talked with them. We plan to do a lot more of this. This is an opportunity for homeowners and renters to work together to protect their own health and the health of our larger community, since this is an area where so many children, families, city employees, and community members in general spend so much time. If anyone listening would like more information or to contact us, you can do so at our website that we've put together, techwise.comapark.org. Thank you.
Colleen Cordis, Ward one, and I wanted to speak on behalf of Community Vision for Tacoma to support the initiative of the, um, the neighbors that are concerned about all the cell tower, the cell antennas on top of Park Ritchie, and, uh, to support their call for the city to commission a study immediately to, uh, to really, uh, do a study of the emissions within a quarter-mile radius, um, and do it within different distances and at different elevations, and also to really review, how did all of those antennas get on top of there? Are, are, um, is the building and the operators and carriers, are they all in compliance with all of the regulations? And, and to really ask the city to, um, go to the Montgomery County Tower Committee, which I realize I don't think you have a seat on yet, but to use your authority and your power and influence to urge them not to approve this newest application to replace three antennas with more powerful antennas. Use this as an opportunity to get them to really, uh, you know, take a pause and, and ask them to do a really thorough review of what's up there, do an emission study, but, but, you know, that could be a lo-, a lengthier process. Um, within the community, we know of some, um, you know, of, of one or two different, uh, contractors who does this kind of study. It sounds like it would be under a thousand dollars. It might just be a few hundred. So, it isn't like a, a big deal to actually get this emission study done immediately, and, um, again, Community Vision for Tacoma would just urge you to, um, to follow up on this immediately. Thank you.
Ron Davies, Ward three. Advocates of NDC's plan, including five of seven Tacoma Park council members, claim that a main goal was to provide a new hub for pedestrians and bike riders to meet in downtown Tacoma Park. The first design in two thousand sixteen reflected this intent. There was no underground parking garage. The current plan specifies seventy-nine, eighty-one, however many underground parking garage spaces. If the goal is pedestrian and a bike hub, why is an underground parking garage necessary? Also, how can anybody deny that a seventy-nine-car parking garage underground will not worsen traffic? Okay, second, steel reinforcement of the back will be necessary on this, in this project. If there's no steel reinforcement, the project will likely collapse onto Columbia, and the process, uh, the process will, will, will involve pile driving and constructing- And the process, the process will, will involve pile driving and constructing a perimeter since the ground is unstable due to the fact that the parking lot NDC plans to build on is on a landfill. The pile driving will probably shake the co-op walls itself. Okay. NDC, it turns out, has a wretched record in the district. It padlocked three black-owned businesses, including a barber shop as well as a church in the Deanwood area of northeast. The claimed excuse was environmental hazards from when a dry cleaner occupied the properties, but that was a known fact, at least since NDC got a loan from DC to develop the properties. This was an obvious attempt at an illegal eviction without benefit of tenant court process. In the end, NDC was forced to let the barber shop open at least temporarily. NDC did not work with the neighborhood businesses before they padlocked them in the most disrespectful way possible, according to Vincent Gray, Ward Seven Councilmember. This is, it appears, what any business that stands in the way can expect. Okay, co-op and other local businesses. The council members and the mayor particularly pay lip service to the values of the co-op just as the mayor does for small businesses. But the reality is that a hundred, one and a half-year construction period will make it very difficult for co-op shoppers to gain access to the co-op, much less park, and will be seriously hurting local small businesses. Even pedestrian and bike travel will be discouraged. Okay. I asked the mayor why there was no referendum. She said, "You elected us to do a job, and we are doing it." As I said at a meeting afterwards, that is not Tacoma Park, that is Donald Trump. Profoundly anti-democratic, not even caring what citizens think, only a referendum, and this question will tell us the answer. It's long past time for the mayor and council to recognize this. So far, all we know is that the mayor and majority of the council voted against the expressed wishes of most of the folks who feel strongly enough to come to several council meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Davies.
Will have no idea what Tacoma Park citizens think unless there is a referendum.
Thank you, Mr. Davies.
The mayor intends not to find out.
Thank you, Mr. Davies. Any other public comments this evening?
Hello again, Jessica Landman from Ward One. I wanted to address for a moment, to you, to address you for a moment about the Tacoma Junction this evening, to correct a key point about transportation aspects of the proposal and the DRC's review. The city manager said tonight, and also her comments on the website said, and I quote, "The county's Department of Transportation and the Maryland State Highway Administration stated that review of the transportation elements of the project will be delayed until after the SHA's vision project of the junction intersection is completed this fall." That is not entirely correct. It's incorrect in an important way. Although the state highway administration has postponed its review until the vision study is completed, Montgomery County DOT did indeed provide its review, and that review included a strongly worded critique of the project proposal, just as the historic preservation comments were strongly worded. Here's a copy for each of you. As you will see, MCDOT states clearly, and I quote, "We do not support the location of the hundred-and-thirty-five-foot truck-loading lay-by area, and it should be removed prior to the certification of the preliminary plan." One reason that they give for this is that they believe that it messes with the crosswalk, which needs to be protected, according to MCDOT. They also say, and I quote, "The existing bike-share station should remain in place, and they do not want it moved for a lay-by." And they say specifically, "Safety would be compromised if the bike-share were right next to the lay-by." They also say, and I quote, "There is an existing bus stop which should stay and should also remain in place." My point is that you do have some pretty clear signals already that the current design will not fly with county transportation officials. You should not be left with the incorrect impression that the Montgomery County DOT is waiting to let you know their views on the current design. So what I am saying is that these are strong signals that the current design contains what I think Councilmember DeBala correctly called some showstoppers. We should be preparing to make real changes in this design, and ones that will still let our grocery stores stay in business and let junction users circulate safely. So please do not think that we are in a holding pattern. It's time to start thinking about these very serious safety and circulation questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Paul Kristowski, seven-seven oh eight Tacoma Avenue. Boy, there's sure a lot of confusion about stormwater with its junction project. There's a lot of confusion about stormwater with its library project, too, I might point out, and we haven't even gotten into that one yet. But, you know, there's several points that I would just like to bring up tonight about some of this confusion. There's some things that have almost taken on the realm of mythology here. They've gotten so deep into the morass. But I want to talk about one. Here's something I'm reading here, a statement from the last call that was held with NDC, where it says, "The Tacoma Junction Project state law requires two thousand five hundred forty-five feet, cubic feet of stormwater to be treated. In fact, state law requires nothing of the kind. State law is very clear on what it requires on stormwater management," and I read to you from the Code of Maryland. "The policy required in Comar for redevelopment basically specifies a fifty percent reduction in impervious surface area below existing conditions. This particular development project is going to increase the impervious surface by twenty-seven percent. There is absolutely nothing in the developer's plans that shows that this volume of water will be reduced, will be managed on-site, or otherwise properly dealt with. The number of two thousand five hundred forty-five that you saw was not a state law. It was done by application of a state guidance, which is subject to quite a bit of subjectivity and interpretation." Another point of confusion that I'm seeing is exactly what the city's authority is with respect to stormwater. The state has certain requirements with respect to stormwater. They're definitely designed to protect water bodies that are properties of the state, such as Sligo Creek. The city can, that's a floor for water management. The city can implement requirements over and above that floor for water management that are designed to protect the welfare of the residents in the city. In other words, the city can be substantially stricter than the state is based upon its own objectives. And by welfare of the residents, I'm primarily thinking of the poor people on Poplar Avenue who have serious water problems. Another piece of confusion that I've heard is someone told me that, "Oh, all the stormwater there from the parking lot now flows down Sicomore. All you have to do is to stand there during a heavy storm, and you can see that stormwater flowing down Carroll, you can see sheet flow flowing across to Grant." These are just some of these points of confusion. I think if the stormwater process were more transparent and open to people, there wouldn't be so much confusion, but everything now is done behind closed doors. I would also point out that I am available as an environmental professional to answer questions both from the council and the citizenry at any time on stormwater. Thank you.
Sachi Venikle Kalsa from Ward Two. What happens in Tacoma Park gets debated in Tacoma Park. And one thing we can all agree about the Tacoma Park Junction project is that there's been disagreement about it. In an effort to provide more objective agreement on some components, I would like to present another in a series of junction re-function clarification documents. This one focuses on the new smaller size of the byright design, which is currently under review by the county. One of my hopes is to provide a set of agreed-upon statements from which we can have a healthy debate. If there's disagreement on the underlying facts and statements, we sow feelings of distrust from the beginning, making any future discussions harder. Let us allow for mistakes to be made and give space for humility needed to restate any previously inaccurate statements. And if someone reviews my work with documented deficiencies, I will update my statements as well. It has been stated that a new smaller design is seventeen percent smaller than the city council-approved design from July two thousand eighteen. It has also been said that this new smaller design is fifteen to twenty percent smaller. This is really, sorry, there's only really one right number to use here, is that the new design, from the latest numbers I have, is twenty-three point eight-eight percent smaller. Let's call that twenty-four percent. The source of the seventeen percent number is if you include the garage square footage in the new and old design comparisons. Note that the garage square footage does not count towards zoning limit calculations, and it can stay the same or increase or get smaller without any impact on the above-ground building size limits. In common discussions, a project of eighty-five thousand square feet was not discussed previously, and the resolution from July two thousand eighteen doesn't specify the square footage of the garage, just said that it would have seventy-two parking spaces, approximately. We have been talking about an approximately fifty thousand square foot project, fifty-three thousand, five thousand, five hundred and fifty square feet, to be precise. I put the detailed numbers provided by NDC to the city in a spreadsheet and ran the calculations, and yes, you do get seventeen point oh five percent smaller figure if you use the previously not included garage square footage. If you use the commonplace numbers on building size, the first and second floor, and compare the new to old design, you get twenty-three point eight-eight smaller design. So, to reiterate, twenty-four percent, or twenty-three point eight-eight percent, is the number to use for how much smaller the new design is. But more importantly, we should strive to use the best numbers we can, and if we find previously used numbers to be inaccurate or misleading, we should not repeat them and should correct those statements. I look forward to debate and discussion with agreed-upon facts and figures, even if we don't agree on the more subjective projections and goals. I already submitted these comments by email. This was, these comments were more generally for the members of the community who are gonna engage on this debate in the future. And tonight, I was very glad I did not hear anyone say either percentage number in all the time I was here. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the email, too.
Hi, Sue Miller, Ward Three. So, tonight we reached a critical moment in the junction process in which the developer has finally presented to us this new plan, which the city never saw and never approved. I'm bewildered that you, the city council, the city staff, and the public had zero input on how all of that extra space was going to be used. Meanwhile, the county has issued a whole list of serious concerns that confirm, unfortunately, many of the longtime concerns of this community. And unfortunately, we are making it hard for residents to participate or even keep up with these complex developments. The move of public comments to a shifting time with no time stated on the agenda and comments starting as late as ten oh seven tonight clearly discourages public participation. But also, the city's website junction page is badly out of date. Between February nineteenth and February, and March nineteenth, the main page was not updated, and the time and place of the public DRC meeting yesterday was never posted. The development calendar hasn't been updated since August. And we've seen that it's been difficult for the council to disambiguate the old and new byright plans, let alone the public. So we ask that the current plan be clearly posted and highlighted on that public page. And most importantly, we request that the city post the extensive and very valuable feedback documents now released by all of these county agencies, and which will be released ongoing in the future on that junction page, and that it be kept free of editorial commentary, as this is supposed to be the primary information site for the public. And we cannot expect the public to weave together information from councilmember blogs and staff blogs in order to understand what is going on with this vital project. Thank you.
My name is Bruce Kazarsky, and I live on Willow Avenue in Ward One. I found it mind-boggling that neither NDC nor city staff were aware that the project you approved in last July violated zoning laws. But frankly, I was even more mind, I found it even more mind-boggling that when the project had to be brought into compliance, changes were made without consulting, without consultation with the city or with the larger community. And that's a shame, because the required downsizing created new opportunities to address the many, the concerns that so many Tacoma Park residents have about this project, opportunities that NDC chose to arrogantly disregard. Given that, here are several questions I hope you will ask NDC in future meetings. First, it's been clear to many of us that NDC's insistence on a lay-by rather than off-street loading was problematic. Now we have confirmation from the Montgomery County Department of Transportation, which recommends that the lay-by be removed. Isn't it past time for NDC to take the space created by, created behind the building by the downsized footprint and turn it into an off-street loading area for use by its tenants and the co-op? Second, why does NDC still obstinately refuse to use the smaller footprint to expand public spaces Councilman Kovar has sought? In fact, NDC could actually fix both, both problems at once by establishing off-street loading in a perimeter around the downsized building and using the exit ramp, closing it off in the afternoon and evening, and using it for public events. Third, anyone with two eyes can see that the exit from the parking lot requires drivers to make a blind turn because of the sharp curvature of Carroll Avenue, creating numerous accidents waiting to happen. Now we have confirmation that the line of sight from that point is less than half of the minimum required by the state. So will NDC change the location of the exit to comply with state standards? There are many additional questions that need to continue to be asked about the number of parking spaces, public transit, stormwater, tree preservation, compliance with historic district standards, and other problems associated with the plan, and I urge you to ask them all. Members of the council, please exercise your authority as owners of this land to demand specific, concrete, unambiguous answers from the company that, for better or worse, is your chosen partner. Thank you.
I'm Lorraine Pierceaw. I'm speaking on behalf of Historic Tacoma now. As you know, we've had a huge problem with this project in terms of the scale and mass and architectural expression. And we reviewed Ms. Ballow's comments that were just recently released, and I want you to know that we think they're pretty spot-on. They're good. They make sense. They make sense from a historic preservation standpoint, and they make sense with respect to our master plan. There's absolutely no concern in our mind that they conflict with master plan provisions and traditional historic preservation principles. And so it was a bit concerning to me to hear the developer refer to Ms. Ballow as staff constantly and brushing off her comments without seriously considering them in, in my mind, when she is a senior preservation professional and she is head of the department. And so I, I urge you to realize that this project is going to change in a considerable way for the better. And I would like the opportunity to talk to all of you about historic preservation and how compatibility is important in our district, and particularly the junction, but in any part of our historic district, so that you really understand why these are really very good comments that Rebecca has posted here. And Suzanne, we can start with a, with a cappuccino at Bus Boys. But honestly, I really would like to just sit down with all of you, because I feel that there is a real lack of understanding of what we mean. We talk about historic preservation of new development and compatibility. And so I urge you to look at her comments again. They are absolutely in, in compliance with our master plan. They are correct in every way. We have our buildings in, in the historic district are less than thirty feet to the parapet. And so scale and mass are important, architectural expression as well. There's a lot of work that needs to be done on this project to make it compatible, and I just want to let you know that. So we can all have coffee together. Okay. Thank you.
But not all at once.
Not all at once. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pierceaw.
Thank you, Mrs. Pierceaw. Any other public comments this evening?
Hi, Nadine Block, Ward Three. Sorry, I can't help myself. I just want to, um, since I'm here so late and I know you all are, thank you all for your work. And, um, I just want to say something that's really obvious. I know that a lot of you wish this junction stuff would've gone away a long time ago. You're not the only ones. A lot of us would like to move on with lots of other important things we do in our lives, and yet, we think this is also very important. So, um, I was really happy to hear that people were, uh, in support of the SHA Vision Study. I think it's also a very important thing that will happen. Um, you all are on some of the listservs in Tacoma Park. I know you also know that many people are ever more frustrated with what they perceive as mistakes or lack of leadership coming from the council in directing, uh, someone that they hired, the NDC, to actually produce a building and a community space that's both appropriate and safe and, uh, puts our community in a good direction for the future. There's a tremendous amount of frustration about what seems to be missed, uh, information and lack of updating websites and things like that. So, I really wanna encourage you all, because there is a moment now where, because of the by right necessity of change to the plan, you all could exercise your power and your right to actually have more input and deliver on some of the things that the community and all of you at some point have said you wanted, which is more equitable access, better public space, safer traffic and pedestrian and bike access to that junction while retaining our community sense and our, uh, the appeal of all of us, uh, the, the feeling that we have about this community taking care of everyone in the, who currently lives here and being open and having, uh, progressive values reflected in the development. So, um, I really do encourage you to, uh, take into account this moment where you did not vote for this particular plan and could, in the timeline, looking forward to the SHA Vision Statement being completed in the fall or whenever it happens, to, uh, make a better product come out of this, uh, planning process. Uh, whether or not we can continue with NDC or another development, uh, corporation, I'm sure there are plenty that would jump in. And we support our local food access, as well as the hard-fought, uh, pedestrian walkways, stoplights, and other things that are currently on the site, and not just dismiss them as being small comments. Um, they're really critical, and I really encourage you to use the power that you have to make sure that the public is involved in this particular opportunity to reopen and make sure that this development serves everyone. Thank you.
Great. Any other public comments tonight? All right.
Hi, my name is Cynthia Mariel. Earlier this evening, Mr. Washington stated, "Correct me if I say something wrong. I'm here to correct Mr. Washington." Mr. Washington also said, "NDC is taking the risk regarding the proposed junction development." No, Mr. Washington, you're not taking the risk. You're designing to take the profit. Those who are taking the risk regarding this project are the residents of Tacoma Park. This is public land. It's the residents in particular, as well as our fellow neighbors who cross and traverse the junction. That is a risk to, to drive through, to bicycle through, to be one of the hundred and fifty children who walk through that intersection every day, to be the crossing guard trying to protect those children while the buses and, are stopped and cars pull out on a regular basis into incoming traffic, not once a day, more like once an hour, if not more. You know who else is taking the risk? It's the businesses who are trying to thrive, trying to survive at that junction. Why is the city building a project that is removing their ability to thrive and survive? Those parking spaces in that garage will be used by NDC for their tenants, and if there's any leftover, they will be charged to people who are going to pay a high price. Those businesses need parking, and they need parking that's accessible, adjacent parking, and that is affordable. Not all drivers feel comfortable, or all genders feel comfortable going into an underground garage. This project is going to put out a business, existing junction, um, enterprises. Why? Why? Explain it to me. Why is the council neglecting the existing businesses that have served our community for years?
Any other public comments this evening? All right, seeing none, then we will move on to our legislative update. I'll hand it over to Councilwoman Kostick.
Yes, uh, well, you mentioned the bond bill already, so that's, that's very good news. We're happy about that. Um, I have a series of, um, updates. I'll just go through and read here. As I mentioned, um, it has been crossover time, and so, we're getting a sense now more of which bills are moving forward and which are not moving forward. So, HB twelve sixty-six, which is one of the economic bills that we, uh, supported, uh, has passed and is moving to the Senate. It was adopted in the House with our amendments, and, um, our legislative advocate, um, is going to submit our testimony for the Senate hearing as well. Uh, HB one oh nine, SB two ninety-five, which is a styrofoam ban, has passed both chambers and looks like it's on its way to final passage. SB two forty-nine, HB two seventy-seven, Regional Transportation and Climate Protection Act has passed the Senate and, um, is mostly through the House. Uh, that's what I have from our legislative advocate. I'm not sure what exactly that means, but it looks like that might be moving forward. Um, SB five sixteen, uh, Clean Energy Jobs Act has passed with amendments, um, out of the Senate Committee, and will go over to the House, uh, a bit late, so it's unclear about what's going to happen in the House based on that timing, but at this point, it is, um, going over to the House. Uh, the cell tower bills, as I mentioned previously, um, both the MML bill and the industry bill have been referred for a summer study, which is good news. HB six hundred, Nuclear Energy as a Renewable Energy Source, which is a bill that we opposed, um, has been amended to be a study, but our legislative advocate recommends that we still, uh, oppose it, and we're corresponding with her to try to determine what next steps we might need to take on that. Uh, HB two ninety-five, SB four sixty-six, which is the municipal hotel tax, um, has cleared both sides and looks like it's on its way to passage. And HB five seventeen, SB four sixty, the pedestrian safety fund, um, is a bill that we have newly put in testimony in support of. I think I mentioned that last week. Um, that bill has passed each chamber, um, but is different on each side. So, um, in the House bill, it keeps the current, the higher fine for striking a pedestrian but does not designate revenues for a specific fund. So, um, we'll kind of see where, where that goes from here. And then, there were a couple of bills that we had been watching, um, but hadn't put in testimony related to, and I'm doing a little investigation related to those, and we may be putting in additional testimony in support of those. Those are, um, two different bills, um, related to transportation issues. So, that's, that's it for now. Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you so much for that update. All right, now, we'll go on to council comments. Does anyone have any comments? It's getting late. Councilwoman Circe.
I'll be quick, I promise. Um, I just wanna thank councilmembers, um, Dubala and Kostick for meeting with New Hampshire Gardens, um, Association on Tuesday. Um, it was a first, where you kind of bring other councilmembers along to a neighborhood association meeting, but it was, it was nice. It was helpful to kind of realize that, you know, maybe, I don't know, that you might've realized, oh, it's the same issues, just a different group, but... But I really appreciate, um, everyone coming out, um, as well as, um, Darryl Breathwaite did an amazing job, as she always does, in explaining the plethora of projects that are coming down the pike for us this summer. Um, I just wanna remind folks that Cop, Coffee with a Cop is, um, tomorrow.
Two hours from now.
Yeah, well, yeah, two hours from now. Um, and also, just want to, um, thank the mayor, and, and I, I don't think he's watching, but Councilmember, um, Friesen, we had a great conversation with him today, and, and I appreciate the opportunity to, um, sit down with him and talk about parks and a plethora of other things. So, um, definitely looking forward to having, um, additional discussions with other county councilmembers that typically, I don't typically get a chance to sit down with, so, thanks.
Uh, Councilwoman Dubala?
Yeah, um, if anybody's still awake in Ward Two. There's one. Um, there's a meeting tomorrow, just a, this is just a quick reminder, there's a meeting tomorrow on Congress Restaurant area, um, the, to talk with the police chief, the mayor and myself about the, um, the many incidents that have, uh, troubling incidents that have taken place or in past, in the past in this location, and strategize about the April eleventh County Liquor Board hearing that's coming up. LED lights, if you have one, and it's shining in your bedroom, call Public Works. I called, and I got a great response, so I got on the list. Um, I'm very happy to, to see that we're moving along with this project. I wanted to share a quick story on Arbor Day, but maybe I'll skip it 'cause of the lateness of the hour, but I picked up a tree three years ago, and it's doing fine. And it was, I didn't believe it was gonna be the case, 'cause it was about like this.
No, they do.
It, it's thriving. You can come by and look. Um, thanks to everybody who made comments tonight, and I'll get back with some of you about that. And are you gonna talk about the tree canopy workshop? Okay. So, um, on my behalf of myself, Council, Councilmember Kostick, and Councilmember Kovar, the three of us have been working on, um, looking at issues related to the tree canopy and to tree permitting. So, this weekend, the, um, the folks from University of Vermont, who've been doing the analysis of, of tree data for, for the city, are gonna do a workshop on Saturday morning at ten here, and then at one, the Tree Commission and the Environment Committee are gonna meet to talk about what we heard, um, and, and what the, what the options are for tree canopy goals for the city that, that would, that would, that would then inform the, the permitting process that we, that we're looking at. And last but not least, next week, I'm going to a National League of Cities Partner, uh, meeting called the Water Now Alliance, and I'm gonna be asking a lot of questions about city stormwater programs. Thank you.
Councilwoman Kostick?
Thank you. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, there was a Transportation Planning Board meeting today. The other thing I wanted to mention, um, in addition to the land use and housing discussion, was, um, that we are starting to hear from each of the three DOTs, uh, in response to a discussion we had earlier this year related to the increasing number of fatalities and , uh, serious injuries that, in the region. And so, we've asked each of the three DOTs, VDOT, DDOT, and MDOT, to, um, come present three times this year and explain what they're doing related to safety, um, what their plans are, what their numbers look like, and how they think they can address this. So, we heard today from VDOT, and, um, had a chance to sort of just get a brief overview of their, um, Toward Zero Deaths program and the efforts that they are undertaking related to, um, serious injuries as well as fatalities. And, and then, we will hear from DDOT next month and MDOT in May. And then, we'll start again, the same cycle, go through each of the DOTs and have them address slightly different issues and delve a little deeper into what they're doing and what we think they should be doing, um, and ways that they can collaborate. And in addition to that, the Transportation Planning Board has, um, hired a consultant that is working with all three DOTs and bringing them together to discuss, uh, collaborative efforts throughout the region to focus on these, um, this reduction of fatalities and serious injuries. I also want to remind people, um, that there is a BF Gilbert meeting, Neighborhood Association meeting, this coming Tuesday, um, March twenty-sixth at seven thirty PM in the Firehouse. I hope people will come, come out. It'll be myself, Mayor Stewart, and, um, your neighbors, and hopefully, we can have a chance to sort of revitalize the, um, the in-person aspect of the Neighborhood Association. It's been active online, but having a chance to meet with people and talk things through, I think, is a little different than just talking on the listserv. Uh, I also have an update, um, related to the meeting we've been trying to schedule through Councilmember Todd's office, um, related to Eastern Avenue issues. We've asked them, um, and they've been very cooperative and helpful in trying to organize a meeting, um, with DDOT, Pepco, and Washington Gas. We've been going back and forth over, I think, the past week and a half on dates to coordinate everyone from Tacoma Park, as well as, um, all the agencies. And I think we are tentatively, hopefully, it will be finalized, but tentatively scheduled for April fourth at this point in time. Uh, we're looking for finalizing a time and location, and I'll send, um, send out some more information about that soon. Uh, last week, I participated in a transit challenge. I think I mentioned at the meeting last week. It was a really interesting, um, opportunity to just reflect on what it is like to use, um, public transportation and walk everywhere. It's something I, I try to do as frequently as possible, um, anyway, but to have to do it for everything was definitely a new experience. Um, there, there was a time when I first moved to Tacoma Park in the DC area when I didn't have a car, but it's been a while since then, and, um, I spent about four and a half hours in transit between places on a couple of days, uh, and I had a chance to really reflect on some of the big picture and, and what seems like it might be needed in terms of improving systems in the region. So, um, I appreciated that opportunity, and I'm going to be speaking at the, um, Action Committee for Transit Meeting in May about my experiences doing that. And then, finally, um, I just wanted to ask the city manager, uh, I know there's been some questions about cell antennas on Perk Richie, and I, if we could get an update on where we're at with getting someone on the tower commission, that would be helpful, as well as, um, the limitations and opportunities we might have related to dealing with private property versus right-of-way antennas.
Um, I can answer, I think, the first question. I don't know that I'm prepared to answer the second. My understanding is that, um, one of the senior staff in the county can appoint members to the tower commission, and that they would appoint some, that person would appoint somebody from the city. For some reason, it's not moved. So, even though the kind of assumption is that we will, that that paper will be signed or something, it's not been signed yet, so I'm not sure what that issue is. Um, as to general issues about cell antennas, uh, it is very problematic about, um, knowing what to do about private ones. I'll see if I can find some other information about it for you, but in general, I just wanna remind folks that the ordinance that the council has passed and the work that we're doing on regulations is related to cell towers in the public rights of way, and that's the only ones that we will be doing, the testing of the RF frequencies, uh, and that kind of thing. I will also say that our attorney that's working on our regulations is very knowledgeable, and he was telling us about even the technological differences between older cell antennas and new ones, that even if new ones are stronger, their radio frequencies don't go in the same way or as far as the old ones. And so, there's not gonna be a single answer, I think, um, that, that will help. And I, I have no idea about how to address a, a request for, for general RF testing in the area, and so, I'll have to give some thought to that.
Councilmember Smith?
Uh, I will be quick. Uh, the MML chapter, Montgomery County chapter meeting that was mentioned yesterday, I wanna mention a couple other things that will be on, on the agenda. This will be, uh, an opportunity for municipal officials to get the county council's thoughts and the county executive's FY twenty budget. That's really important. Uh, there will also be, I, I would expect a robust discussion on tax duplication and ADUs, I think, will also come up. Uh, I also wanna make people aware that I'm going to have a meeting with the Chief of Police on Friday, uh, to talk about... Police on Friday to talk about the incident at Tropicana and see what things that we could put into place to make sure things like that don't happen again in Ward Five, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Just want to let folks know that on Sunday, I spent the afternoon at the Islamic Center of Maryland as there was a gathering of local leaders and both elected officials and faith leaders to pay respects for the horrific deaths in New Zealand last week. And so I just want to thank everyone who organized that so quickly and brought it together. In addition, I just, I do want to just remark regarding the state highway administration's visioning thing. I think it was one of the commenters tonight said they were glad to hear that we were supportive of it, and I'd just like to make the point that we've been pushing for this for a very long time, and in particular, like to thank one of our former colleagues, Councilmember Tim Mail, because I remember that one of the very first things Tim and I collaborated on was getting the crosswalks on Carroll Avenue. And at that time, had spoken to S H A about doing a more holistic view of the junction, the Tacoma Junction area, and it was at that time that, they wouldn't call it a study. They called it a look at the junction with additional monies they had in their budget that year. And so I would just like to state that this is something that the council, former and current, has supported and has actually been pushing for, and we're very glad that Administrator Slater has taken this on and is doing it out of his office. So I will just say definitively, we are all 100% behind this visioning project. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager.
I get the very last word.
You do tonight.
This is a strange thing. The first thing, it's happy spring, it's still spring, first day of spring, and I just wanted to say, as you're thinking of lawn work, remember that we have our SafeGrow provisions, and you can go to our SafeGrow website to look at videos on organic turf management. I do know that we are certainly looking at our website about how to make reporting of violations of various city laws, plastic bags, et cetera, easier to do. I've been under some criticism that we were telling people that it's the law to do SafeGrow provisions. So some people want us to say it, and some people don't want us to say it. It's certainly the right thing to do, and we'll try to make that as friendly but as clear as we can in our various education efforts. I do note that we got the $150,000 from the library project, and I really do want to thank the District 20 delegation, both two years ago and this year, for their work. You know, frankly, part of the reason I think we got the money was the concern about the floodplain and the concern about climate change. So I take that very seriously, and we want to do the right thing. It's city budget time. We are working really hard on the city budget, but it is a very challenging city budget that I'll be bringing to you in two weeks. And I just want to note that 37% of the Tacoma Park residential properties have a lower tax assessment this year. We've had four straight years of city tax rate cuts, and County Executive Markell Rich did not put an increase in the tax duplication payments. So it makes a very challenging effort when we have very standard increases. We have decreases in operating costs. We do have some increases in personnel costs because that's how life is. We are in the process of holding a number of meetings with the staff who've actually done a yeoman's job of looking at every possible other way to do business so that we can lower the costs, and we're now considering the implications of those to share with you. So I'll be presenting the budget on April 3rd. There'll be a lot of opportunity for budget open houses and public comment and your consideration so that you can pass a exciting budget in May. But I want people to recognize that the assessments coming in with essentially flat this year is a real problem when we haven't had a tax rate increase for a long time and we've had the same tax duplication payments since 2012. And so it's just, we've hit the wall, and that's going to be a really tough discussion There were a couple other notes. I'll put my report on the D R C meeting regarding Tacoma Junction online. I will clarify, because there's been a request for me to clarify that not all of the things I'm referring to are from the meeting directly, but also from the notes for the meeting, so I will just make a minor change in that. There have been requests for website updates to be more rapidly done. Seriously, we have a person who does so many things, and in her spare time, she tries to get the website updates. As we go forward into the budget with all of these different kinds of requests, remember, as you heard when the senior leadership team met with you, our staff is so thin. We're trying to do the best we can at keeping information up to date, but it really has been a challenge as we do other projects as well. So it's all triage all the time. If there's something that's critical because it's a firefighting issue, a critical issue, we will jump on it, but I do want to plead that folks who want to have information immediately should just be aware that we're also doing a million other things, and we're trying to do the best we can. If there's a real issue, please contact me, and I'll see what I can do to move something faster. Well, that's it. Thank you.
Great. Did you have a comment?
I did. I had just a question on the money that we get from the county. I thought when I read it that we did get an increase in the police money and also the library.
So the library and the police rebate that are called those things are separate from the tax duplication?
Okay.
And they are calculated differently? So the county has not been able to cut those or keep those flat?
They've actually got them up a little, yeah.
Those went up a little bit?
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, we are adjourned.